All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Welcome. And Madam Chair, we are live and over to you.
All righty. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Washington County Board of Commissioners, meeting of Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Yes, I can, Madam Chair. The Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, is now meeting this regular session, April 26, 2022. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Phi?
Here.
Commissioner Trese?
Here.
Vice Chair Willie?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
All right. Just wanted to note for our community that compared to the originally published packet, items G1 and G2 were swapped. So we'll first take action on appointing the Tri-County Planning Body Committee members, followed by the item to approve a resolution and order amending the solid waste and recycling administrative rules. And recently, there was an update to the presentation under item E number one. So the next item on the agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for community members to come and share their thoughts with us for up to two minutes per individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone signed up at this time?
We do, Madam Chair, and I will note for a lot of attendees that signed up to speak on the solid waste item G2, that is when we will take your comments. So this will be just for all other items. So first, we have Dale Feek. Dale, can you hear us?
Yes, Kevin, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Chair Harrington and Catherine Harrington and Commissioners Roy Rogers, Jerry Willie, Pam Trese, and the fee of five. I'm Chair of the Western County Citizen Action Network. During today's work session, County Administrator Angie Tanya reported on the Equity in Into Practice event that she and Chief Equity Officer Latricia Tillman and Chair Harrington attended. We, as a county, have much to be proud of based upon the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners here. The quarterly report with slides that will be presented to you today at this commission meeting by Latricia Tillman certainly is worth studying by everybody. Kindness toward others is a hallmark I observed by Chair Harrington, not only in helping lead the effort in equity in Washington County, but in the following small way. As you know, I have attended many county work sessions and board meetings before COVID restrictions and afterwards. During an early work session, Chair Harrington requested that the facility staff get or buy extra-large seats so that people who are big in stature and who attend the work sessions have a seat that fits their large frames. No one really noticed this small gesture of kindness, but the people who use the chairs, I'm sure, certainly did. After listening to Chair Harrington talk about the Clean Water Services-sponsored theatrical play about climate change, firm that my support of Clean Water Services. Clean Water Services actions will help prevent the next mass extinction, as was portrayed in the play and as reported on today. At a previous work session, Chair Harrington asked a lot of questions about the county's climate change strategic action plan. She requested the county staff revise it so the actions are taken now, not later, to address climate change. Thank you, Chair Harrington, and county staff, honored her request. Thank you.
Mr. Feek, would any other members of the public like to address the board for up to two minutes on any other county business tonight? Give you just a moment to utilize the raised hand function. Not seeing any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda is somewhat brief compared to usual. We only have five items. One item under Land Use and Transportation, two items under the Office of Community Development, two items under Support Services. What are the wishes of the Commission? I think I'll take that as a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers and a second from Commissioner Trese. Thank you, everyone. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda? Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Sorry, I just got a kick out of that. Too much time on Zoom, I guess. Next, we'll move on to proclamations, and we have the month of May ahead of us. So tonight, we have a proclamation to proclaim Asian-American, Native American, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Tillman.
And team. Yes. Good evening, Chair Harrington and members of the board. I'm very excited to be with you today to talk about Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I thought I had my presentation up in front of me, but now I am not finding it. I apologize for that.
One moment, please. If I could suggest, while Ms. Tillman is looking for that, I see that we have four, at least fourteen, members with us. Dale Yi, Melanie Fappel, Alicia Aquino, and Zai Cheng Huang. If you might introduce yourselves to us, I think we would really welcome and appreciate that.
And I now have my presentation up, Chair Harrington, so I can do that. And that way, we'll go in the order that people are prepared for, and I apologize for the delay.
No worries. I hope you didn't mind me filling space.
I do not. No, and I absolutely appreciate your flexibility and the flexibility of the committee. So I am pleased to offer a few introductory remarks on our cultural heritage celebrations before I turn it over to Dale Yi, who is a Senior Human Resources Analyst within our Human Resources Department and a member of the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Planning Committee, and he will welcome in our art piece for this evening. So as an introduction and reminder, Washington County Cultural Heritage Celebrations and Resource Pages are an important starting point for our collective organizational engagement and learning about equity, diversity, and inclusion. The Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrations that we will enjoy beginning in May have been planned and organized by more than twenty staff who volunteer to support our learning in addition to their official work and in partnership with Clean Water Services. I'm not going to read all the names to you of the staff, but I do want to appreciate them for the time they have spent planning these activities. These cultural celebrations offer an opportunity to enter into relationship with staff and the community who identify as Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander to build trust and deepen our understanding of these diverse and growing communities in Washington County. The celebrations also create an opportunity to learn about historic and present oppression of the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community, and these communities' resilience in the face of that oppression, so that we can reflect on whether or not our current policies and sentiments support the well-being of the community and whether they dismantle racism and white supremacy. So no culture is monolithic. All cultures, ethnicities, and nationalities encompass a range of diverse life experiences and opinions. And within the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities, there are over forty-five countries and far more ethnicities. Consequently, the celebrations and resource pages are likely to not present a comprehensive picture of the nuances or full range of opinions within any of the nationalities, ethnicities, cultures, or subcultures. But it is important to acknowledge that all of these countries' histories and cultures being lumped into one month of celebration is very insufficient. However, the staff who are participating in our Heritage Month committees are very thoughtful about the learning opportunities they curate for our Washington County community. And we encourage people who may be curious about what is or is not presented, or the policy implications of what is shared this month, to reach out to us at the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, or to open a dialogue with their colleagues and those who are serving on the planning committee. So I wish to thank all the members again of the committee who met over the past several weeks under the leadership of committee co-chairs Alicia Aquino from Health and Human Services and Melanie Foppel, who's new to Washington County and also serves within Health and Human Services. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dale Yi to introduce our art piece, and then he will be followed by Alicia Aquino, who's the co-chair of this planning committee, who will start reading the proclamation, and then following that, Melanie Foppel, who is also co-chair of the committee, will provide closing remarks. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dale.
Thank you, Latricia. Appreciate it. To Chair Harrington, our Board of Commissioners, our honored guests and all attendees, I wanted first and foremost to say thanks for the opportunity to speak before you today. As both an employee of Washington County and a citizen of Washington County, I am honored to be a part of the celebration for the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Celebration for the month of May. The next, I will be, I have the pleasure of introducing our art, our young artist. His name is Zhi Cheng Huang. And I met him in the fall at a cultural celebration event in Beaverton, where he actually presented a piece of art that he created to the B4 Church off of Walker Road. And I was really intrigued by his art style and asked him to participate in our celebration for the AANHPI Heritage Month Celebration 2022 with a piece of art of his creation. Zhi Cheng and his family immigrated from China to the United States in 2014. He is currently a senior at Valley Catholic High School with plans to attend UC Davis for college. He's been drawing since the age of six and has been drawing ever since. He really enjoys putting different things on canvas through different stylized art techniques. And with that, Clerk Moss, thank you. I will actually turn it over to Zhi Cheng to speak about his artwork directly. So Zhi Cheng, if you will.
Thank you very much, Dale. And hello, everyone. Again, my name is Lee Chong Huang. And I created this art piece again due to Mr. Dill's invitation. This painting mainly explores the topic of leadership and cooperation through many races. With inspiration from my uncle, I decided to show leadership and cooperation through the sport of Dragon Boat. And in my country, Dragon Boat is a celebratory sport that invites people of any ethnicity to participate together. So there's other team members sitting in the middle of the boat and doing the paddling. There are two people who sit at the very front and back of the boat. One person will be act as a humpman and the other will play a drum. Some people may see these two people as not doing as much work like the rest of the crew, especially the drummer. I see these two people as the most important qualities of a leader. The humpman needs to know where the goal is and leads the team on the road to reach the goal, while the drum efficiency of cooperation and leads the team towards its goal. And this is a message I mainly want to deliver through my art piece. Again, I want to thank Mr. Dale Yi for giving me the opportunity to draw this, and I hope you enjoy my art.
Thank you, Zhi Cheng. And so to the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to present a piece of work that Zhi Cheng has created. And this will be given to the county, and it is my hope that we will be able to display it in our county facility. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dale. As mentioned, my name is Alicia Aquino, and I'm from Guam, born and raised. But Washington County has been home for the past eight years now, and I'm very pleased to be here with the committee. And with that, I will go ahead and start the reading of the proclamation. Our proclamation in honor of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month 2022. Whereas the Washington County Board of Commissioners takes part in recognizing May 2022 as Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, celebrating the many notable contributions of this diverse population, who have enriched our nation's history and are instrumental in its future success. And whereas after decades of effort, federal legislation sponsored in 1992 by former New York Congressman Frank Horton, permanently designated the month of May as National Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas the month of May was chosen to commemorate the arrival of the first known Japanese immigrants to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869, a feat which could not have been accomplished without the incredible efforts of approximately 20,000 Chinese workers who endured widespread racist violence, mistreatment, and hardship throughout. And whereas Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Americans represent over forty-five diverse ethnic groups, including all those who have immigrated to the United States themselves, or whose ancestors originated from the many countries within Asia, India, the Middle East, and the numerous Pacific Islands known as Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia. And whereas the generations and generation for generations, Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have courageously reached for their hopes and dreams and forged a proud legacy that reflects the spirit of our nation, often in the face of severe racial bias and discrimination, which has increased in recent years. And whereas we stand in solidarity with Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities, and assert in the strongest possible terms that anti-Asian racism, intimidation, and hate crimes will not be tolerated and have no place in our society. And whereas the triumphs, perseverance, and achievements of Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders continue to inspire us by honoring the past through centuries-old traditions that reflect the multicultural customs of other communities, while also creating new and innovative ways to celebrate the community and lead us into a brighter future. And whereas the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community has played a significant role in our local history and the community fabric of Washington County with enormous contributions to science, education, agriculture, government, commerce, the arts, and many other fields of endeavor. And whereas the theme for this year's observance is advancing leaders through collaboration, which also reflects Washington County's strong commitment to an equitable and inclusive organizational culture dedicated to co-creating a prosperous future for and with our diverse community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this 26th day of April, 2022, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, encouraging all residents of Washington County to share in this special tribute for learning about and celebrating the generations of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders who continue to enrich our nation and our local community.
Thank you, Alicia, and hello, everyone. As mentioned previously, my name is Melanie Fappel. I am the Equity Coordinator for Health and Human Services, and I am honored to serve as co-chair with Alicia on the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month Committee. Before the close of this proclamation presentation, I do feel it is important to once again shine light on a truth that lies at the center of the celebration. It is the understanding that the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander story is a vast mosaic of lived experience. With over forty-five ethnicities and authorship, our collective narrative is a complex alloy of ideals. It is a story that embraces indigenous, immigrant, and refugee origins. It celebrates generations of community collaboration and moments of stark solitary courage. And that honors the pride and love of our elders and ancestors while still seeking new spaces, new voices, and new mediums for evolving authentic expression. Speaking personally, while this contrast and variety can feel emboldening, as it's a reminder to me that I am a part of something much larger than myself, we must also actively remember to make space for the individual. As poet David Mynano writes, "I am both rising sun and western sunset, where light romance is stark, but the world sometimes does not have a place for the in-between. I guess I'll just have to find a way to make the twilight last longer." On behalf of the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month Committee, we would like to encourage all of us to approach the celebration with awe and humility, and to continue seeking and uplifting the individual histories, the unique experiences, and the singular stories among this expansive and beautiful collective. Thank you. And with that, I would like to yield the floor back to Latricia.
Thank you, Committee. Thank you, Shish, Zhi Cheng Huang, for your art. And I will turn it back over to Chair Harrington to make comments and adopt the proclamation.
Well, before I see if my colleagues have any comments, I wanted to ask Ms. Diane Taniguchi Dennis, our CEO of Clean Water Services and a Native Hawaiian, if there are any comments she would like to share. It's not required, but I wanted to give you the opportunity.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good evening to the Board of Clean Water Services and to all of the team members at Washington County. We're just so delighted to share and be part of the celebration with Washington County. I'm half Japanese and half Korean, and I grew up in Hawaii. So a lot of my cultural roots come from my childhood growing up in Hawaii with this sort of wonderful blend of all of the cultures that are there. So I just wanted deeply thank the team over at Washington County and also at Clean Water Services for this celebratory time that we're having. Thank you, Chair.
Wonderful. Commissioners, Commissioner Trese, I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you, Chair. I want to say thank you to the entire team for bringing this forward. I enjoy all of our cultural celebrations, and I learn a great deal. The month of May has personal significance to me. My son-in-law, Melino, was born and raised in Hawaii, and my two granddaughters are Native Hawaiians as well, Addison and Olivia. So I always, you know, when people are near and dear to your heart, these things just are a little closer to home. So I want to say thank you to all of you here. Thank you for the beautiful artwork, and I will continue to enjoy all of our cultural celebrations. I really like this one. So thank you very much.
Other Commissioners, Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I would echo those comments. And then for our young painter, what a great piece of work. I am just a little disappointed, and I'm going to tell you why. I hate to see talent leave the state. We have a lot of good universities around here. So if you ever reconsider, come back to Oregon. We've got some great places that you can get a great education and stay home. Speaking of Pam's comments on home. So anyway, thank you for contributing. That's very, very nice.
Well, seeing, go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Well, you have to comment about what a beautiful piece of art that is. And I would say that I would love to have it in my office, but obviously, it probably should be prominently displayed somewhere else and not your office, Latricia. I'm sorry. But no, I'm certain that we will find a great place for that. Thank you very much. It was spectacular.
Go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I echo everything that was said before me, and thank you so much for this wonderful presentation and great job to the artists and one of those universities or two of those universities, if I may recommend Commissioner Rogers talking about Portland State University and Pacific University. So those are good options to consider instead of moving out. But but thank you. This is wonderful. And I do want to comment something that Diane said. I think you said Hawaii twice, and I think the first time you said the native way. If I am the I've heard from Hawaiian friends of mine, correct me how we say Hawaii. So I think the first time you said the native Hawaiian way, and then the second time, I think, was a Hawaiian. So am I correct in that? Did you say that, Diane?
Right. You heard a little bit of my tongue, right? Which is Hawaii, right?
Yes, that's what I heard. And then I heard the regular Hawaii. Yeah, perfect. Happy. Yes. Thank you.
I just would like to add that UC Davis is a really good school, and graduate schools are always options.
Oh, Mr. Huang, thank you for sharing your art with us, and may you enjoy spreading your wings and going to UC Davis. But know that you have a warm welcome here in Washington County should you ever choose to return and make Washington County your permanent home. I do appreciate all of the care that has gone into this proclamation and presentation tonight, as well as the multicultural pages. And I don't know what it is about the proclamation for this meeting. But it really struck me with some new information I had not considered previously. And I appreciated your bringing it to life through the reading. My question is, Ms. Tillman, could you acquaint me with how these proclamations are developed? Is that something that the planning committee does?
Yes, it is. It's over the past year and a half or so that we have had significant involvement with our staff teams, which have been facilitated through the staff within OEIC with our community engagement team. Staff have been very involved, and I believe it predates the office as well, but staff have been very involved in drafting the proclamations and making them fit the county context, as well as current issues that various communities are dealing with. And then we work with our communications team. Julie MacLeod has been our point person for finalizing the proclamations, putting them into proclamation language, and then finalizing them to go before your board.
Well, I think the care really shows. So thank you, team. I really appreciate it. And with that, Commissioners, would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Trese, for making a motion to adopt tonight's proclamation, and a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor of proclaiming in honor of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2022. Commissioner Phi, there we go. Thank you. Anyone a post? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, team. And I look forward to changing my background to a new cultural heritage background. Thank you for the care that goes into creating those as well. Have a good evening. Next.
Chair.
Yes.
I wonder if it's possible to get for our background a copy of the painting.
We'll have to ask the artist about that. Oh, which reminds me, Dale, I meant to say thank you so much for encouraging the idea of a local young artist to develop a piece that reflects the theme of the proclamation this year. That's, it's just amazing. I have no artistic ability whatsoever. Ask me to build something, I can do that. But but I really do appreciate visual arts of all types. So thank you again.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I will, for Commissioner Trese, I will work with Zhi Cheng to see if we can turn that into a graphic that you can use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay well, everyone. Next, we will move on to presentations, and thank you again, Ms. Tillman, for once again coming back with us with the with the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement Quarterly Report for the first calendar quarter of the year, January through March of 2022. Oh, my screen's moving all around. Here we go. There it is.
Thank you so much again, Chair Harrington and Board. And my name again, for the record, is Latricia Tillman, and I'm the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer for Washington County. And we are here, Amanda Garcia Snell, our Community Engagement Manager, and myself are here again before you to give you the quarter update on the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. Next slide. So I'm just going to touch on this briefly. This slide just is a, I think, a nice reminder for all of us of where we are located in the big picture of time. We haven't always had racial inequalities because the concept of race didn't even exist until it was needed to justify the system of slavery somewhere around 400 to 600 years ago. And now we are coming up on the 60-year anniversary of the passage of the Civil Rights Act. So intentional governmental action to end state-sponsored inequity is a fairly young practice. And so for all of us who are feeling stretched about the work that we are embarking on, it is very normal to feel like we're operating in that stretch space as we try to intentionally dismantle systems and structures that have historically created inequality in our, in our communities. Next slide, please. I want to follow up on several comments that were made by board members about the visit from Professor John Powell last week to the Portland metro area. He addressed as a lead-in to the Government Alliance on Race and Equity Conference. He addressed a small group of multi-jurisdictional elected officials representing Metro, Washington, Clackamas, and Multnomah Counties and several cities in the region. And his message really challenged us to upgrade our equity and inclusion efforts to get us, bring us into that stretch space where creativity happens. Focusing on targeted universalism and belonging is what his work and research has done for a number of years. And it helps us assure that everyone is included in our efforts to establish a strong, vibrant community in which everyone feels they belong. Targeted universalism, which we will start to socialize more in our conversations with the board, asks us to establish universal goals that represent the best outcomes that we want to see in our entire community. And then to dismantle the various ways that different communities have been forced to the margins through structural inequality, both established in policy through our, in our lives and in that of our ancestors. So the work becomes about tailoring our strategies so that everybody can achieve the universal goals that we set. The concept of belonging that Dr. Powell addressed really centers on co-creation, which is something that we have been begun building into our practice with the support of your board and with an increased focus on community engagement early in processes where there's an opportunity to establish a shared vision and establish a shared process and decision-making. Next slide. We've talked quite a bit about the change management curve, so I won't belabor this too much, except to say that we're in it. And so as we strive to move towards a one Washington County vision and make that real, and as we strive to center equity and inclusion or targeted universalism and belonging into our work, we definitely feel that stretch, and the stretch tends to slow us down as we reconsider past ways that we've done business and start to develop and co-create new ways to move our processes toward equity. And you'll hear a lot more about that this evening. Next slide, please. So the great news is that we have had a number of significant accomplishments over the past couple of years since you all adopted the equity resolution. And so wanted to take a moment to pause and celebrate and really appreciate the wonderful leadership that has come from the board, as well as the amazing work of staff, both in the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement, but also staff across the entire organization who have really stepped up to be a part of this change journey. So beginning in February of 2020 with the adoption of the equity resolution, again, the board July funded the office. I began in September 2020. And then since then, we've been off and running with launching the Equity Leadership Council and its committees last spring. In August, you adopted the Equity Action Plan, and we launched the Co-Creation Committee for the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. Last fall, we launched the Budget Equity Tool, touched on that a little bit later. And then in March, you approved us moving forward with a multi-jurisdictional community engagement request for proposals. So again, really centering on that co-creation, but co-creating across jurisdictions within Washington County. And then just last, not even last month, earlier this month, you established the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. So really significant change, even as we make our way through that change cycle that we should all be very proud of. Um, so with that, I'm going to pause on speaking and turn it over to Amanda Garcia Snell, our Community Engagement Manager, to talk about some of the great work that's coming out of our community engagement team. Amanda.
Thanks, Latricia. Next slide, please. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. As Latricia mentioned, I'm Amanda Garcia Snell, Community Engagement Manager in the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. And I'm here to share some of the community engagement work that has been happening over the course of the last quarter. Next slide, please. So this slide we've shared in the past, it's mainly a visual to highlight some of the types of opportunities that we create or support to ensure comprehensive and equitable community engagement across the county. Next slide, please. So this slide is a brief list of some of the external engagement work that we are currently involved in. As Latricia mentioned, the ARPA cross-jurisdictional community engagement is an effort with Cities of Beaverton and Hillsborough to have shared community engagement best practices across the jurisdictions in relation to the ARPA work. So the RFP, as you can see, closed last Friday. The project team and some community partners are in the process of reviewing the six proposals we received, and we hope to have a contractor selected later. And then the reapportionment community engagement. As a reminder, we're conducting this community engagement in three phases. So the first phase we already conducted, that was with community partners and really collecting information to provide to Portland State University as they develop the proposed boundaries. And then we have identified a contractor to support Phases Two and Three, which will be the more broad and culturally specific community engagement work that we'll be moving forward with. So that we can, now that we have a contractor in place, we can start moving forward with that process to, to, well, we have them identified to move forward in that process, to have them on board. So that once you all have approved the proposed boundaries that PSU is currently working on, we can hit the ground running with the community engagement. The CPO re-envisioning, as a reminder, there are four elements of this that we proposed to work on, boundary consideration, which will be, which we will work on after the proposed boundaries come from, are approved by you all from PSU. And then the alignment with the county strategic planning for that broader community engagement. We also plan to look at the CPO structure and to then update Resolution Order 8658. So the most immediate next steps for this large project are to put some current information and updates on the website so that community knows where we are in this process, which is in the very, 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 very beginning. And then we plan to pull together a stakeholder work group that will include internal staff from various departments and community partners to help us guide that work. So our civic leadership training, we continue to meet with community-based organizations. As a reminder, we decided to open this up more broadly to other community-based organizations that may be interested in providing different types of civic leadership training. We got a lot of interest from different groups that we haven't worked with in the past in this way. And so we're pretty excited about that. We're meeting with those folks and still on track to provide another cohort this fiscal year, and then we'll be poised for cohorts in the coming fiscal year as well. And then the board quarterly town halls. As you know, we completed the first quarterly town hall. This year was focused on the budget. We had 49 people attend the event. That does not include staff. There were more folks there when you include staff. And an additional 29 people that watched on, viewed it on YouTube, or 29 views on YouTube. And then as of last week, there were additional 63 views on YouTube. So the next town hall is planned for June. And we are, we have started some of that planning. And then as soon as we have the topic finalized, and we'll hit the ground running with that work as well. As a side note, Highland Edelman from our team, who's been leading that work, has recently accepted a position in HHS as the Climate and Health Program Coordinator. So we are very excited for her, of course, sad to see her go. And moving forward with the town halls, I think Marcus will be supporting, Marcus Ford, who you all are familiar with, will be supporting this work. And next slide, please. So this is a brief list of some of the internal engagement that we're working on. So the equitable community engagement policy is, will include elements such as compensation for participation and other considerations that support equity, diversity, and inclusion in the way that we engage with community as an organization and as a partner in the multi-jurisdictional ARPA work that I mentioned earlier. And we plan to take that to the Equity Leadership Council in May, and then bring it to your board later, once it's gone through stakeholder reviews for consideration. And then with boards and commissions, so in the past, we have reported on quarterly on the demographic data of applicants and appointees to boards and commissions. And now that we've finished a year of that, we'll transition to reporting that information to you annually. And the, but we will continue to track it and use it to inform our recruitment work and the work of the Equity Leadership Council Committee that's devoted to diversity and inclusion best practices for boards and commissions. And then the land acknowledgement. We are, we have identified indigenous consultants to help us, to help inform the implementation plan. And our next step is to develop an internal work group to create that plan and then bring it to you all for an update, once we're further along that road. And then Cultural Heritage Months, something like the, very timely with the proclamation that you made this evening. But the Cultural Heritage Months, we continue to support those. And they, they are building cultural awareness across the organization. But really, they're also strengthening community relationships and are tied to policy in a way that, that I hadn't really imagined when we started this work. And so that's also pretty exciting to me. Next slide, please. So this is the final slide for my portion, but it's really to highlight our weekly digest or E-update that we call it, its engagement opportunities that is really geared towards community-based organization in hopes that they would share that with, with the communities that they serve. It continues to grow in subscribership. And I hear from people all the time how appreciative they are to have all of these opportunities in one place. And these are really opportunities that we get, we find, we see as a team or we hear from other community-based organizations that are asking us to share these things out to broader audience. And back to you, Latricia.
Thank you, Amanda. So next slide, please. So we will pivot now to talk about some of the updates that we have for this past quarter, focused on equity, diversity, and inclusion. So next slide. We continue to move forward our work within our internal Equity Leadership Council. Again, just for your, refreshing your memory, we organized the Equity Leadership Council Committees based on six pillars of equity, diversity, and inclusion best practice. So we have a focus on civil rights, boarding commission diversity and inclusion, employee and supplier diversity and inclusion, equity and inclusion training, equity data, and equity policy. Those committees are all coming up on their one-year anniversary. And so we have been focused on, over the past quarter, on updating their charter, establishing a meeting cadence that allows people to really dive into the complexity of the work and also to have time in between the meetings to advance the work of the committees. And then we recently completed a set of committee open houses to inform the staff of Washington County about the focus of each of the committees as a lead-in to an opening for committee recruitment, which will begin in May. And we anticipate filling of certain vacancies because either attrition or people have left to go to different jobs, or their work no longer supports them being able to engage in this just because of workload. So we have some attrition, and we're wanting to keep that membership robust and fresh and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to participate in the committees that they have an interest in. Next slide, please. One of the major accomplishments, as you know, of one of our committees, the Equity Policy Committee, was the creation of the Budget Equity Tool. And so just a few process measures, we trained over 280 staff, provided quite a lot of consultation to staff and groups as they were grappling with how to complete their budget equity tools. There were 67 budget equity tools submitted as part of this year's budget process. And then this didn't fall within quarter one, but early quarter two. Last week, we provided an orientation to the Budget Committee members on the Budget Equity Tool so that they will be able to incorporate that thought process as they're thinking about the budget as it moves toward adoption. So in the next quarter, you will see, and as you move towards adoption of the county budget, you will see budget equity highlights in the budget summary for this year for the first time. Next slide, please. As you will recall, earlier this month, you adopted the ACRE or the Advisory Council on Racial Equity Charter. That recruitment for membership, for the inaugural membership of the ACRE, the Advisory Council for Racial Equity, and the applications are open until just the end of this week. So I wanted to put in that plug for anyone who's interested. And then we will present applicants to the board in a work session on June 6th. And then I apologize for the typo, but the board appointment of advisory council members will not happen on the same day. We will come back to you in the board meeting on June 28th. And so that's moving forward, and we appreciate your leadership and support on that. Next slide, please. From a civil rights perspective, we are moving forward with required all-staff discrimination, harassment, and retaliation free workplace policy training. And to date, we have completed the training with over 700 county employees. And I wanted to really do a shout-out and appreciation for the sheriff's office, who has already trained all of their employees. So a hundred percent of their staff and leadership have been trained and they were one of the early adopters of the training and they completed that in the fall. We have director, manager and supervisor training launching this week. HR, the HR team was trained today and then all staff training for this discrimination, harassment, retaliation free workplace will begin mid May. And commissioners, four of the five of you as a board have completed the training and we will work with commissioners who were not able to attend that training and happy to provide that individually as well. Next slide, please. So as you know, we are in our first kind of cycle around the sun as it relates to our work in procurement equity. You adopted updates in our procurement policy to center equity, diversity and inclusion in our procurements. And so we're grappling with what kinds of metrics make sense to report to the board. And then we can start to think about what is that goal? That universal goal and then begin looking at what are the specific strategies that can help increase our COVID spend. So right now, our COVID spend is slightly under three percent. Both our numbers are increasing of the actual spend and for COVID and the numbers continue to increase of our total spend on procurements. And so we're seeing us kind of stay steady at about three, slightly under three percent. I've seen other jurisdictions engage in similar work and have much lower numbers. And so while it seems very low, I think we are not starting from scratch. And so we want to continue to build on the good work that's happening across our departments in terms of them being intentional about seeking out opportunities to contract with certified firms. Next slide. So we're also continuing to report on actual vendors who have registered since the last quarterly board report and we see about over a thousand total registered and on Open Gov total suppliers registered ninety nine vendors registered since last quarter and a quarter of those twenty six were certified minority women and emerging small business suppliers. And in total, two hundred and nine certified minority women, emerging small business suppliers represent about twenty percent of our total registered vendors. So we continue to be challenged with certification and identification and the verification process. And also recognize that many vendors hold multiple certification or identification. So you can be a minority small business, minority owned small business, a woman owned small business, a veteran owned small business all at the same time. And so there is some multiple accounting of the same supplier. So and we'd like to be able to dive in more and be able to have more confidence in the numbers that we are able to present to the board. Next slide, please. So I wanted to circle back around to you. I think we announced in January that we were launching a twenty one day racial equity habit building challenge. And in January, we had a Teams channel that was set up that outlined the opportunity to engage in that habit building challenge over every single working day of the month of January. And we had almost four hundred members in that team. And then we conducted an evaluation after that training was completed. We used a post then pre design, which is a more accurate way of measuring actual learning, especially as it relates to cultural competence, kinds of trainings. And so just wanted to note here, one data point, which is knowledge of institutional racism, both before participating in the twenty one day racial equity challenge and after participating in the twenty one day racial equity challenge. And the questions that were asked were, I'm knowledgeable of the ways institutional racism exists in society, in my workplace, and how it might be impacting my coworkers. And so we can see that of the people who participated in the evaluation, there was a significant shift from oh, you know, maybe I'm not sure, I don't know, or I disagree to, I'm, I agree, and I strongly agree in terms of a knowledge increase, both societal workplace and impact to coworkers. So we're really excited about that. And we'll be working with the training, equity training committee to think about doing additional twenty one day racial equity habit building challenges and also to really intentionally tying evaluation to our trainings. Next slide, please. I did want to note some important partnerships. One is with the talent acquisition team within HR. We are, we actually completed a review of bids and will be launching training specific to our talent acquisition team to build equity, diversity and inclusion into our recruitment processes and to dismantle some barriers to diversity recruitment and retention as a result of that partnership. And then we expect our talent, training and development, RFPQ to launch later this spring. And then that will create a list of qualified trainers that are vetted. So departments can access those trainers for their equity, diversity and inclusion training. Next slide, please. I won't talk very much about this, but I just, because you've heard about it from our staff in SHS Supportive Housing Services who are, they work as part of our office, OEICE, but they're specifically focused on both community engagement and equity within housing as part of the supportive housing services delivery work. And one element that we wanted to highlight was the work with the shelter program, community engagement to inform shelter citing equity guidance and community engagement. And so you've already heard about that. We're just really proud of that team and the work that they're doing. Next slide. And then very happy about our partnership in the area of equitable economic development. We have been working for several months now in partnership with the Latino Policy Council to address some of the concerns that emerged as a result of the bridge shelter citing on Caesars or Tenth, Tenth Street. And so we have a contract with them to address community identified priorities related to the shelter and which focus on security, lighting, solutions for waste and then accessing resources and supports. And those resources and supports are really for the small businesses that are operating on Caesars and wanting to make sure that they know how to access both the resources that we're making available to them, but also the broader economic development work that's being led by the city of Hillsborough. And then finally, the next slide, Amanda talked a little bit about this, but this is another partnership that has been happening as a part of our ARPA funding and our effort to embed equity within that specifically within the community engagement work. And so as Amanda noted, the RFP closed and we will be partnering with the COVID racial equity advisory group as well as economic development staff from the cities of Hillsborough and Beaverton and Washington County to interview the consultant who will be helping to launch this broader community engagement effort focused on our ARPA investments. But how we're implementing those investments and then how we evaluate those investments. And so we'll have more to report on that. Once that consultant begins in June and then throughout the remainder of our ARPA funding period. And with that, I will open it up to questions, which is the next slide.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Latricia, when did, what was your first day that you started at Washington County?
I don't know. I think September, mid September.
Of?
Twenty twenty.
September of twenty twenty. So now we fast forward to April of twenty two. So basically nineteen months.
About that.
You, you started with a blank slate. A resolution, had some guidelines and outlines, certainly some goals and aspirations. And you've just delivered this presentation showing what work you and your group have done. And I'd say you've been very, very busy and you've done a great job. That was impressive. And so I just want to say thank you for your hard work and certainly convey that to your team as well, because they've had a lot of work to do. And as you know, every time you and I have a conversation, you have to educate me and bring me along on this stuff to give me to think a little bit outside of the box. And you've done that. So thank you for that. And this was great. Good job.
Commissioner Willie, if I can respond briefly, I just want to make one correction, and that is we did not begin with a blank slate. There was quite a lot of work and a lot of champions for equity, diversity and inclusion work that have been doing work for a long time within Washington County and just needed some of the board support. You all elevated that work and made it formal and created an organizational structure. So I think it cannot be understated the impact of your leadership and your support in getting Washington County to where we are today. And then yes, I inherited an amazing community engagement team and was able to build from there and just continuing to build out and really appreciate the support of staff from across every single department in the county as well as our community partners who've kept us on track and, you know, continue to give us that sense of urgency so that we can improve our services to our community. So thank you for your support.
Other commissioners, questions or comments? No, seeing none. I'll, I'll help wrap it up. I would also like to thank Ms. Tanya Angie and also Mr. Carr. Because as part of hiring our new C O and our new county council, we were looking for a new administrator and a county council that might possibly have had experience implementing equity along the way. And just all the members of the organization embracing change for a brighter future for everyone, so that everyone has the opportunity to thrive. And I really want to thank you, Ms. Tillman, for our monthly discussions to help craft and refine different ideas and proposals. But especially I want to make note of the work, the adding a tool to the toolbox for the county with co-creation. And I see how that tool is being used all across our port service portfolio. And yes, it has taken time in certain ways, for example, with the Latino policy contract with Calle Diaz. And, you know, there have been community comments that we've been slow to respond, it's slow to listen. But the listening that has occurred has been certainly genuine, but more so intentional and using that co-creation tool, which has made for a richer, deeper experience, I think, with the community that will pay dividends, not only for this agency, but also for those community members. So thank you for being brave and teaching us how to take advantage of best practices and to move forward. And Amanda, boy, I know you've had some, some tough, but also some meaningful conversations with people in the community over these three years that I've known you, three plus years. And I hope that it's getting in many ways easier. Well, for three weeks now, I've been doing things in person again. So, boy, it feels tremendous. So I hope you're having that experience as well. Particularly with the CPO re-envisioning effort. Thank you for helping me better understand through tonight's presentation what those four phases are all about. Just job well done. Keep up the terrific work. And thank you for taking us to new places and for encouraging us to get outside of our comfort zones and try to be better as individuals, but also together in our collective community. Just thank you so much. And I know not only that I and the board appreciate these quarterly updates, but the community does too. Thank you. Were there, were there any last comments from commissioners? Just checking. Okay. All righty then. So next we'll move on to boards and commissions. We have two different committees we're talking about tonight. The first is to appoint members to the Behavioral Health Council. So we went over this in a work session recently. So we have a proposal to appoint Colin McCoy as a new member and to reappoint Larissa Thomas, Jay Sean Fields and Dave Maury as returning members to the Washington County Behavioral Health Advisory Council for a term ending March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Wow. A quarter of a century already here in the twenties, in the two thousands. Hmm. I wasn't quite prepared for that. Anyway, do we have a motion to make such appointments? We have a motion from Vice Chair Willie, a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, colleagues. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have a proposal to approve appointment of the city of Banks Mayor Stephanie Jones to replace prior Mayor Pete Edison on the County Transit Advisory Committee and approve appointment to Grant O'Connell to replace Brenda Martin as the ex officio member representing Trinette. What are the wishes of the commission? We have a motion from Vice Chair Willie, a second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And next, we'll move on to our first action item. It's another committee member appointment, but it's not our standard boards and commissions. So we went over this in a work session recently and now, oh, hello there, Ms. Paige Spence. Do we have a presentation? Yes, we do. If I just turned my page in preparation. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you, Ms. Spence.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good evening, Board of Commissioners. I will wait just a second. I'm in hopes that the presentation will load. There we have it. As always, thank you to our amazing IT team. So as Chair Harrington so eloquently kicked us off, I am back today as Paige Spence, your Government Relations Manager to follow up on a April twelfth work session agenda item to stand up. to follow up on an April twelfth work session agenda item to stand up the tri-county planning body. And so without further ado, if you go to the next slide, I will cover what's on our agenda. Thank you. So again, this is follow-up from the April twelfth twenty-two work session. And I want to do just a couple of quick things tonight. I know your board has a lot still ahead on your agenda. So first, since I was just here before you, we'll review the purpose of the tri-county planning body as a whole. And then I will seek your board's approval for two action items. The first of those is to adopt the tri-county planning body charter, and I will talk a little bit about the process and content there. And then finally, considering the candidates for the tri-county planning body as the second action item. And again, I'll talk about sort of the process and outcomes there as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. So first, the purpose of the body. Again, this, the tri-county planning body comes from language of the supportive housing services ballot measure referenced on your screen. And in terms of the scope of work and purpose of the body, the tri-county planning body is charged with creating goals, strategies and metrics to guide the regional investment fund that's mentioned on your screen. So five percent of the total allocation for each county goes into a regional investment fund to address homelessness across our region. And the group will not be replacing those community-centered local implementation plans, but just will help the program be as effective as possible by coordinating across the region. Next slide, please. So the first item that I would like your board to consider is to adopt the tri-county planning body charter, which you can think of as sort of an addendum or a follow-up to the I G A that your board approved earlier this year. The full language of the charter is in your packet. I'll just speak briefly to the process, which is that program, policy and legal staff from all of the jurisdictions, the three counties plus metro have negotiated the language of the charter, being faithful to the ballot measure and looking at other qualitative and quantitative criteria that we would want to see in the candidates and then, of course, also in the governance and how the body will operate. So in terms of the substantive content, the key components of the charter are listed on your screen. And the one item that I wanted to call out to remind your board of is that for governance, there will be two community member co-chairs who will be appointed as we get further along in this process. And that as opposed to their regional oversight committee, which Chair Harrington serves on, the elected officials in the tri-county planning body are actually voting members. And then additionally, to be able to support the chair and the candidate slates work, I will have staff from Supportive Housing Services Program and Government Relations from all four jurisdictions. So we will work with those co-chairs on setting an agenda and strategic direction for the body that is in line with what your board wants to, where your board wants to see this program go. Are there any questions about the charter in addition to the language that you've been able to review in your packet? Or may I ask the chair to seek a thumbs up for the board on this item?
I'm not following my cues very well. Commissioners, do you have any questions this evening about this proposal? Since we discussed it in work session. No, I'm not seeing any. So with that, do we have a motion to appoint James, oops, wait a minute.
That's okay, Chair Harrington. I was, I'm going to get to the slate, the slate of candidates for the next slide. We can do this in a couple of ways. We could do it all together. I don't know what best protocol here is for thumbs up. So I was just going to ask for a thumbs up on the charter first, and then I'm glad to cover the candidates themselves.
We'll, we'll do it all as part of the motion too. Don't worry.
Okay, wonderful. While with that, then we can advance to the next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so moving on from the charter to the candidates themselves and the process to bring this all together. Because if I didn't say it already tonight, I know we discussed it at the April twelfth meeting. But we're talking about, of course, a regional body with candidates for all four jurisdictions. And your board is only going to be giving a thumbs up on the Washington County folks tonight. But since this is such a regional body and a regional program, I did want to make sure to, to note the regional process so that while we have candidates listed for each jurisdiction, it was really a collaborative effort to come up with the slate. And one thing that we talked about at April twelfth that I'm very excited about is how many of the candidates selected more than one county that they sort of pertain to, if you will, or that they could represent because they live in one and work in another. So we truly have had a collaborative process and a really well-rounded slate. So the candidate criteria are outlined in the charter and the jurisdictions created a scoring rubric to ensure that the selected candidates from our applicant pool not only meet the requirements of the measure, but also the mean, the needs of our communities. And the outcome there is a slate of candidates that, again, while split into counties for purposes of adoption, really represents our whole region. And so while you'll note that the next slide has candidates broken up into counties, the entire slate that Metro will adopt has been deemed more than acceptable by all the jurisdictions. And so as you can see here, the timeline for adoption, I spoke to your board on April twelfth, and here we are, April twenty-sixth. Pocahontas County has adopted the charter and the slate already, and Multnomah County is expected to do so on Thursday and Metro the following week. And so once all those formal steps are taken, then Metro staff will begin to reach out to the candidates who have been nominated to work on scheduling and which I'm sure will be a hairy process, but to get to that first meeting expected in late May or more likely early June. Next slide, please. Wonderful. So without further ado, here are the candidate slate names. And the names should look familiar since they were, nothing has changed since the April twelfth meeting. Again, so we've got James Schroeder, who is the CEO of Health Share, our C C O. We've got Michael Liu, who represents, who works at the Asian supermarket Fubon and lives in Washington County. We've got Zoila or Zoe Capiano, who works at Community Action of Washington County. And then Monta Knudsen, the CEO of Bridges to Change, who strengthens families affected by addiction, mental health and poverty and homelessness. And then for the rest of the folks, I will not provide a detailed overview for the sake of the time. But again, want to reassure your board of the desired diversity of demographics and lived experience and professional skills to do the work that this board needs to do. And I would be very remiss if I, of course, did not mention that for our elected representative Chair Harrington has volunteered to step up. So thank you, Chair. And you'll note, Board, that on for Pocahontas County and Multnomah County, their elected officials are already identified. I am not sure who from Metro yet is planning to serve, but I will get that information to your board as soon as I have it. And so that is the conclusion of my presentation. The next slide, which we can advance to, is as always, just further questions and discussion, which in this case, it sounds like we can do one single motion would be a thumbs up to adopt the tri-county planning body charter and the candidate slate. Thank you so much for your attention.
Per our procedures, we'll do a voice vote on that. Don't worry. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on this? Nope. Seeing none. I would like to ask for a motion to appoint James Schroeder, Michael Liu, Ziola Capiona, Capiano, excuse me, Monta Knudsen and myself to represent Washington County on the tri-county planning board as well as approval to adopt the tri-county planning board charter as submitted. Do we have such a motion? We have a motion from Commissioner Phi, a second from Commissioner Trese. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, Paige. Job well done. One word, ho we go. With more great work being done to address chronic homelessness and reduce, to eliminate chronic homelessness and reduce the number of people who enter homelessness through the supportive housing services program. Next on our agenda is the second action item, and this is with regard to solid waste and recycling administrative rules and correction, collection rates to enable additional recycling collection services throughout our Washington County community. And there we have them. Mira Samantha, our interim director of health and human services and Mr. Thomas Eggleston, our expert in this whole domain. Please take it away.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. As the chair said, my name is Mira Samantha. I'm the interim director of health and human services. We're pleased to be here before you tonight to present this recommendation for your action. I will go ahead and turn it right over to Tom to get us started.
Thank you, Mira. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. We're here to this evening to talk about additional recycling collection services. We will go over the proposed additional recycling collection service program for the unincorporated areas of the county. Let's go ahead and jump in. Next slide, please. So starting off with a timeline of this conversation up to this point here today, this evening, we wanted to start in November and December of twenty twenty-one, when county staff in the solid waste and recycling division conducted a community input survey, asking community members what aspects of an additional recycling collection program they would find value in and how they would access that program. On January eighteenth, staff came to your board during a work session to discuss different regulatory approaches for managing additional recycling collection services. At that work session, staff received direction to work within our current certificate or franchise system and then also develop a temporary rule allowing other persons to provide services within our communities until such a time as a permanent program is available. On January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, staff returned to your board with that action and your board adopted resolution in order twenty-two fifteen to temporarily allow other persons to collect recyclables for compensation. On February tenth, staff met with the garbage and recycling advisory committee to discuss the community input received at the community survey and help inform any design and development of a future program. On February twenty-second, staff developed a set of draft administrative rules that would implement such a program and shared that draft set of rules for public comment to an additional interested parties newsletter and posted that on the county's hot topics webpage for the solid waste recycling division. On March tenth, staff attended the garbage and recycling advisory committee and received a favorable recommendation to your board of commissioners to adopt both the administrative rules and the rates for this new collection program. On April twelfth, staff returned to your board for a work session to present a specific proposal as included in your packet this evening for action. And your board requested staff return to this evening's meeting on April twenty-sixth to act on such a program. This evening, April twenty-sixth, we are here to present this proposal to you for action and to chart the next chapter of this program. If the program is approved, it would be step to launch on July first, twenty twenty-two, as identified in the administrative rules. Next slide, please. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about the benefits of fully regulated services and really underscore that this whole conversation has really evolved into a discussion about franchised solid waste collection systems. I think it's really important to note and think about the whole system and not just small piece parts of the system. The county manages, manages a solid waste, a comprehensive solid waste collection system through a franchise model. That model is authorized under Oregon State Law Chapters, O R S four fifty-nine A dot zero eight five. This approach really provides county with the tools to ensure all community members receive quality services ranging from safe garbage disposal and recycling to yard debris and food waste composting programs. And that we ensure these programs protect the public's health, safety and welfare. The franchise model was first adopted in Washington County in nineteen sixty-nine, when the county first adopted Washington County Code Chapter eight point zero four. This chapter of the county code gave the county the ability to ensure essential services were provided throughout our community in the most efficient and economical manner. Franchises are important in many essential services like electricity, distribution and solid waste collection, for example. The benefits of franchises are many. They provide our community members with access to services they need, no matter how profitable those accounts may be in serving individual community members. There is no customer of last resort in a franchise system. A community member serving, requesting service in timber, the far reaches of our county would receive the same service at the same fees as a community member requesting service just outside of the city of Hillsborough. Similar models to the postal service and the stamp, fifty-eight cents sends a letter to New York, and it also sends a letter to Oregon City. Introducing additional recycling services through a franchise system model also extends those benefits to the additional services provided and discussed here this evening. Highlighting some of those benefits a little more closely, we wanted to highlight equal access to waste removal services. We want to ensure that, for example, Aloha neighbors receive the same access as our Bethany neighbors. We should not be providing services to community members based on perceived prosperity of their neighborhoods. We want to ensure that regulatory safeguards are in place for all the services we provide through a solid waste collection system. We want to ensure that any collector meets the regulatory standards and thresholds that we set in place to ensure a safe, economical and environmentally beneficial delivery of solid waste collection services. We want adequate worker safety protections, automobile and pollution liability insurance. And most importantly, we want to ensure what we collect as recyclable material is in fact recycled. We also want to make sure that we set fair and just rates. And those rates are set through open, transparent, public process. Your board will be reviewing rates in our annual rate review next month for the solid waste recycling collection system. And, and also importantly, we want to ensure that our services are growing in alignment with our regional vision and values. The metro regional government with local government partners spent years developing the twenty thirty regional waste plan. We engaged various community groups and community-based organizations to identify the values and visions that we should integrate into our solid waste collection system. A franchise model allows us the opportunity to integrate those values and visions into our delivery of these services. Next slide, please. A little more about program features of this proposed additional recycling collection program. These features were developed in, with consideration of the community member feedback that we received from the community survey in November and December of twenty twenty-one. First, there's no subscription required. There's no long-term commitments to this program. Community members can access it on an on-call basis when they need it, and they don't have to pay for it or access it when they don't need it. It is an on-call program, as I just mentioned, and is separate from regular curbside collection service. If community members do not feel the need to take the service, they are not required to. The service will be delivered in a new twenty-gallon lidded bin set next to other bins on the curbside routes. And again, it can be used as frequently or infrequently as required. The program would also be supported by bilingual content and expert customer service through our service providers. And county staff would support community members in any complaint or dispute resolution as it is a regulated service provided under the county's jurisdiction. It also incorporates an ability to change over time and adapt to the marketplace. We understand that with the new Recycling Modernization Act, new programs and new materials might enter our mixed recycling programs. That's a great opportunity for all of our community members. And with support of manufacturers and producers, we can recycle more and more. This program is designed to be able to be nimble and adapt to those changes. If new, if program materials that are in this program move into the mixed recycling bin, new opportunities might arise or programs such as this might become moot at that point in time. We also have incorporated reuse drives into this program, requiring our collection providers to participate in collection drives for reusable materials, at least quarterly, in coordination with county staff. This is the first, one of the first programs we're aware of in the, in the state of Oregon that incorporates reuse into a regulated solid waste collection system. This program also includes two phases of implementation. Initial phase is for single family through fourplex homes that receive collection services directly to their households and pay bills directly with their service providers. We've also requested a commitment from our service providers that they will provide services to multifamily communities within a year of the implementation of the first phase of the program. Next slide, please. The materials included in the program include plastic film and bags, plastic number one clamshell containers, textiles, compact fluorescent light bulbs and batteries. Batteries are actually proposed to be added to the standard recycling curbside service through this rule-making package. You can see the estimated generation amounts in tons on the bottom of each of those material categories. Notably missing from this list is styrofoam, which is a material we hear a lot about from community members and we learn a lot about as we learn more about recycling systems and programs. Two reasons styrofoam didn't make it on this list. The first reason is the cost prohibitive nature of collecting styrofoam, mostly air, very bulky and light material. We estimated the cost of between nine and twelve dollars for a thirty-two gallon bag of material, which is pretty costly prohibitive for many community members in our community. And most importantly, the recycling systems in place for styrofoam and polystyrene products are what is called chemical recycling process. And this recycling process is not a standard recycling process where materials are broken down into flakes or pellets and remanufactured into processes. They are chemically altered back to their original composition. There's some research and debates happening in the environmental community, including a recent report from the Natural Resources Depends Spence Council in early March of this year that cast doubt on the environmental benefits of some of these recycling processes. County staff want to ensure that what we encourage our community members to collect at the curb and we ask them to pay for is actually benefiting the environment. And we're not confident that we can guarantee that by adding styrofoam to this program. Next slide, please. The slide talks a little more about the program in general and refers to pages twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-eight, the proposed solid waste and recycling administrative rules in your work, in your packet. Sorry for the typo in the work session there. First, the service available to urban residential customers. There's questions about rural customers. We, in reviewing survey feedback from our community survey, we received very little response from our rural community members in those zip codes. And staff feel in order to understand demand for services and whether there is a need for that service in our rural community, we need to do more work. But nothing prohibits the county providing those services. Also acknowledging that more time between stops and time in motion would occur in the rural community, likely increasing the cost of such a program. Materials are contained in provided bags. Materials are contained in provided bags. Haulers would deliver bags to households to contain those materials in those bags. Those bags would be placed within a fifteen to twenty-five gallon lidded bin per the admin rules and that bin is selected by the county in partnership with the service writers. The service fighters and the county have selected a twenty gallon bin, which would provide the opportunity to contain four, five gallon bags of material. Customer requests the pickup, which would be available every other week. And if they don't request the pickup, then they wouldn't have to pay for that pickup. Also includes this quarterly reuse drives I mentioned earlier. And what's important to note is this proposal is also requesting that batteries be added to existing glass recycling bins, which would be available to all standard curbside customers within the county. Next slide, please. The fee structure developed for this program includes a base charge and a per pickup charge. This is consistent with how the county manages on-call garbage and collection in our community. The base fee is a low fee of two dollars and fifty cents per month that helps maintain customer lists, ensure community members receive information regarding the program, understanding about reuse drives and materials collected in the program, and it also pays for some of those fixed costs associated with material or equipment acquisition, vehicles and those kinds of things. The curbside pickup fee is a per pickup fee of nine dollars and twenty-five cents at the curb with increased costs for off-curb pickup options depending on the distance from the curb. Next slide, please. We did receive a significant amount of community input on this topic throughout the last year plus. The county has held the community survey as mentioned. We also hosted a community listening sessions with some of our volunteer recycling enthusiasts, namely the promoters ambientalists volunteers for central cultural or received some really good lessons learned from those listening sessions and surveys and have tried to incorporate them into this proposal. We've also worked with the Washington County Hallers Association to ensure we understand what they can provide and the services they can offer to our community. We've worked with our local government partners. We've also received a substantial amount of public comment and input. And we will likely receive more of that this evening from community members interested in this topic. And finally, we received input from the garbage and recycling advisory committee in their recommendation to your board of commissioners on March tenth in favor of both the rules and the rates included in this packet today. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation for your board today is that staff recommends that the Washington County Board County Commissioners approve the proposed amendments to the solid waste recycling administrative rules that set as set forth in exhibit A of the resolution in order and the proposed solid waste recycling collection rates as set forth in exhibit B of the resolution in order. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thomas. Before we go to our public comment period for this item, I'd like to see if commissioners have any questions of our staff. Commissioner Treese, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Rogers.
That's okay.
I didn't. Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Aleson, for this report. Thank you for all the work that the staff has done and the GRAC in relationship to gathering public comment and pulling together a design that is 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 focused on on our on our residents in Washington County. I'd like to ask Mr. Carr and Mr. Eggleston if you could address some of the issues that we're reading in both the the media and in customer letters from Ridwell to their customers regarding claims that they're making about this program and about what's happening in Washington County. Could you help me with that, Mr. Carr? I'm thinking about, for example, not allowing Ridwell to serve. I'm thinking about issues like it's more expensive, tho- those types of issues. Mr. Carr, could you help me, please?
Sure. There's nothing in this resolution in order that stops Ridwell from serving. The 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 whole idea of allowing Ridwell to serve was to provide the community members who's who purchase that service with the opportunity to get it. But then to extend that right as as far as possible throughout the county. Ridwell says it has about sixteen hundred customers in Washington County. And we don't know whether all those are unincorporated Washington County, but that's the number and there's two hundred and twenty thousand households in Washington County. So the the with a program that Mr. Eggleston has just described is intended to reach all of those folks who live in the urban unincorporated areas of Washington County without affecting what Ridwell's doing right now. Eventually, it will affect them if the if this program is successful, but that's an if. And right now, the customers who who get take Ridwell service today will have it tomorrow. There's no question about that. With respect to the prices, I'm not really familiar with Ridwell's prices. I have Mr. Eggleston perhaps speak to that better, but you can see the prices that are set in the the resolution order that you're being asked to approve are quite reasonable. So and I believe that they are the same as or lower than Ridwell's. So I don't know that it's an increase in pricing.
And perhaps I could ask Mr. Eggleston to address the issues. For example, there is no contract with that that our residents in Washington County have to sign and the magnitude of pickup e- every other week is double what their what their experience might be with Ridwell right now. Is that correct, Mr. Eggleston?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Treese. There's a it's, you know, they're they're different programs. They are collecting similar materials, so they're easy to want to compare, but they are fundamentally a little bit of a different program. Our understanding is that Ridwell's service model is based on a subscription and a commitment from a three to twelve month commitment. And depending on how long your commitment to the services, you your price is lower for that service. We received feedback from community members in our community survey that they didn't necessarily need the service as frequently as every other week and they would, many of them would like to take advantage of it monthly or even less frequent. So we really use that feedback, which was one of our main findings from that survey to inform that on-call service model option. So that the a single pickup per month would cost about eleven seventy-five, which I believe is lower than the lowest subscription rate from one-year commitment from Ridwell is. And it also includes a twenty gallon pickup service and our understanding is that Redwell bin is about twelve gallons. So it's a it's a different service. It's a little bit of a different model. It's more of a use-on-demand model and less of a service commitment model, if that answers your question.
That does. Thank you very much. I I will turn it over to Mr. To Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. I'll try to make it not too long. I didn't have an opportunity during the work session to ask, but Thomas, a- as far as the cost to administer this program, i- is that all covered in your mind and in our franchise costs? And if so, what do you do with a private vendor? Should they provide? How how's that going to work?
So the cost model that's proposed on the fee schedule in this program is designed to pay for the program itself. So we are intending that the the program is not being subsidized by the base rate payer. That's the design's intention. And we will be, if approved, tracking financial separate from the base rate. So the base rate pairs are not having to pay for that maybe ten, fifteen percent of the customer base that wants to take advantage of this extra service. We feel that's kind of an important fundamental.
Just to recap, I got a couple more questions, but just to recap, this is structured such that there's no cost transference to other parties who don't take the service. If this is a standalone, those who take it will be paying for it and the costs will incorporate enough overhead, if you want to call it that, to administer the program. So there's no added costs to administer the program.
That is certainly the intent and the first year's rate setting is based on estimates and best guess judgments from our CPA firms and the and the rate setting and analysts from the haulers association. But yes, that's the intent. Absolutely.
I- in regard to these are going to be somewhat unusual items at times, as we know. Does the program also have adequate insurance and property damage coverage so that if there's any sort of issues that that'll be dealt with? I I know you've said that there are there's insurance and I understand that. This is a little more unusual. I I don't want people to infer that because we're administering the program that's that we're covering all costs. If somebody runs a vehicle up on the lawn or breaks a sidewalk or, you know, a lot of things could happen. So if it's your intent and to your knowledge, that all that will be covered in the program.
Yes, absolutely. So this program would just essentially be adding an element of the existing services are.
In your mind, my last question, in your mind, is there anything, because I didn't see it, anything that would prohibit any private company from participating as long as they comply with this ru- the rules of this program? Is there anything that would restrain them from doing that?
Well, this program is, you know, would be developed and implemented by the certificate holders. Yes, the haulers. And I and I defer to Mr. Carr on the second half of that question.
So Tom, so Tom, just to clarify that if all of a sudden, I mean, the idea on a franchise, some people like them, some don't, but you know, the the idea is not to have a lot of vehicles going up and down and to regulate and make certain that people will take coverage. They won't cherry pick and you know, we all understand what franchise program is, but is there anything in this particular set of actions that would prohibit private companies, private vendors from also attempting to enter it or to participate in it or to ask for inclusion?
The the only ones who could be included are certificated haulers. So you can't just come in and participate. You have to have a certificate. And and that that Commissioner Rogers is structured under state law. We've just implemented here in Washington County.
Thank you. That was my understanding and I just want I wanted that clarified because there's a bit of confusion on that. And so, thank you. That's my questions.
Do any other commissioners have any questions at this point? Before we hear from community? Okay, seeing none, I do. I'm a little confused. I there's been both the discussion and I may have heard you wrong, Mr. Carr in your answering Commissioner Treese's question. But I wrote down, nothing stops Ridwell service. And the point I'm trying to get to is I know what we're talking about is service to the unincorporated areas. And as I heard Mr. Eggleston described, we it doesn't seem that for this alternative recycling program, I'm hoping I'm referring to it correctly, that we're not moving into enabling it in the rural area. So we're really focusing on the various areas of urban unincorporated Washington County. So I got that right. Okay. So I'm somewhat familiar with different certificate holders covering different areas of the unincorporated areas. Pride handles some, Walker garbage handles some, waste management handles some as just three examples. So if there are currently Ridwell subscribers in the Fran- in the certificate holder areas from those franchise holders, does this and if the current certificate holder does not wish to get into the bin business and and so on and so forth, can they just enable Ridwell to offer the service? And then we're not. I I'm still confused and I'm sorry. I'm just not clear on it.
Our Washington County Code does allow certificate holders to subcontract portions of their certificate area to other providers upon approval by the county. So the example we have in the community right now is Washington County Dropbox, which is a service that is not a certificate holder, but they do provide services on behalf of Walker garbage, West Slope and Evergreen garbage. So that is an option for a service writer that does not wish to provide the service under their certificate. Hope you're muted, Chair.
I'll leave it at that for now and see if I have any comments after questions after community input. So at this juncture, having no further board questions on the proposal as presented by staff, I would like to ask our board clerk, Clerk Moss, if we have anyone who would like to comment on us this or comment on this this evening.
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. I have a list that I will go down from the people how they signed up and then we'll call on any additional people that want to provide comment. So we'll start with Pat Solis. Pat, can you unmute and hear us?
I will happily. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
All right. My two minutes are counting. First of all, thank you for holding this public forum and allowing me to give testimony. I live in Aloha, which, as you all know, is an unincorporated area and I have been a Ridwell subscriber since June of two thousand and twenty one. One of the things I would like to mention is the feel-good aspect of Ridwell recycling and whatever you decide to do here in Washington County, you may want to adopt some of their practices. When I use Ridwell, it's I don't hold stuff in my garage. I don't become a mini depot. And I like knowing based on what they are collecting that they may be partnering with a women's shelter or something may be going to someplace else. And so I feel like I'm doing my part. I'm thrilled to hear that Washington County may be considering this and will be using Aloha as a place where they will pick up. I will tell you that I pay sixteen dollars a month for Ridwell and I've been very happy with it. But I also believe in recycling and I could support Washington County. One of the things I'm curious about is how many headcount will be added in order to maintain this program? Because I haven't heard you talk about the people it's going to take or the type of extra materials, vehicles that people may be using. And I'm really glad to see the categories that you are including. As far as plastic film, that was the big reason that I got into recycling with Ridwell. Other places I can easily take things over to Far West Recycling. So thank you. I think this is a great idea and I'm sorry I didn't hear about it sooner. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next, we have Jack Ling. Jack, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I must first make a confession that I am asking for the opportunity to speak because my partner is particularly passionate about this particular topic. And when your loved one is this passionate about something, you do your best to show support. And because she is, I had taken the time to look more into the matter. And hearing all of your comments before our public testimony, I have two main central question. One, if certificate holders are allowed to continue to operate, whether it's an urban or non-urban Washington County, what is stopping you from working with Ridwell to become a certificate holder to continue to continue their services as they are right now? Because just like the lady that spoke before me, we're currently Ridwell customers and we're very happy. And as much as I understand and am glad that the fact that you guys are choosing to explore a new approach goes back to the old saying, why fix something that's not broken? Um, my second comment, I will keep it quick, but it's something that actually is a revelation to me upon hearing what is being said here before the public comment section is that you guys look to provide equity service to all of the residents here in the county. And I'm I regret to tell you that is simply not true. Because here in Aloha and unincorporated Washington County, we start currently still do not have service and access to composting. So if you are not able to deliver on what you previously promised to have equity for all, how can we stand and fully support this initiative that you're now trying to undertake? So I urge you to continue to allow Ridwell to operate. And again, if it's a problem with licensing, please consider the option of working with them so they have the private proper license to continue to operate. Thank you very much. And that's my time.
Thank you, Jack. Next, we have Brian St. John. Brian, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
So first, I applaud the board for taking the initiative to expand the recycling options for Washington County residents. This has been long overdue. We all need to have more choices for recycling to make this world a better place. I have one direct concern and one overarching concern. First, there's nothing in the draft of the solid waste in recycling administrative rule is on top of the recycle options except for the quarterly reuse drives. If I am to put clothes If I am to put clothes in the textile bag, I want to know they are going to someone in need versus being broken down into component parts, or worse yet, just simply disposed of. But my main concern is with the archaic system, which has been in place since 1969 without much change. It is a monopoly. It stifles innovation. We all would not be here tonight talking about expanding the recycle options for Washington County residents if it were not for private industry and companies like Ridwell. It should not be illegal for me to pay a private company to pick up my recycling. Based on temporary rule number 21, it will be illegal for Ridwell to service my home if they are not a certificate holder. And there can only be one certificate holder per geographic area, thus the monopoly. I would highly encourage the board to review the entire structure of the solid waste and recycling program under state law to create an opening for private companies outside of the existing franchise hauler system. Choice is one of the key pillars that this country was built upon. Do not continue to take choice away from residents of Washington County with the current structure of this proposal. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Lauren Temler. Lauren, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Please go ahead.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate your time and consideration and the work you do for our community. I am a resident of unincorporated Washington County. I'm also a CASA volunteer with our family court system in Washington County. And like every community member that has spoken so far, I want to speak tonight to support Ridwell and encourage the commissioners to continue to permit them to do their recycling collection in Washington County. For one, it is and will continue to be a superior service to what the committee and Pride Recycling is offering to me. Ridwell has established community partnerships to find second lives for our waste and thus reducing the environmental impact of our community. Pride says they will do this, but they have no track record of it. Like the previous speaker, I currently do not have access to curbside compost pickup in unincorporated Washington County. I wish that that would be available and would be a first start for this committee. And I wish that they would prioritize this as an option before trying to shut down a private collection company that was founded by families just trying to find a better way to discard their batteries. The ability to have used clothing, sheets, styrofoam, electronics, and any myriad of household waste to have a second life right from my doorstep for dollars a month has been priceless to me as I try to reduce my family's carbon footprint. I care about my community and I am passionate about how efficiently our tax dollars are spent. They should be spent taking care of our community members and improving our neighborhoods, not on lawyers to defend lawsuits that you can prevent from happening by continuing to allow Ridwell to service the county. I have no doubt that Ridwell will win its lawsuit in our county if it is, again, stopped, which is sort of the plan as it is right now, like it did in Seattle. And now we have wasted time and taxpayer money that could have been spent in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next, we have Melody Poland. Melody, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so I just also wanted to piggyback on the comments previously, now twice, that the collection of food scraps is not allowed in the waste bins. I understand this is a tangential issue, but as the topic of equity was brought up previously in Washington County, or rather unincorporated parts of Washington County, I also wanted to add that I was disappointed to find out upon moving here almost a year ago that that option was not presented to residents of this area. Also, I just wanted to, you know, further clarify that, as I do understand it, Ridwell not being a certificate holder would not be able to operate in this area. I encourage you to continue allowing Ridwell to operate in unincorporated Washington County and compete with any new services that the existing haulers might end up providing. Because I do think that just allowing the consumers to make the choices as to what is benefiting them the most and allowing them more options in terms of what they can recycle, what will be reused. And if there's options to multifamily households that will also be able to have their recyclables picked up, because I understand that maybe in the new haulers will not have that option available for at least a year into their new service provision. So I just wanted to follow up with those topics because I didn't hear a whole lot about those comments that were touched upon. But thank you so much for hosting this meeting and bringing this topic to light. And I encourage you to allow Ridwell to continue operating in unincorporated Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Next, we have Claire Morgan. Claire, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Claire Morgan, and I'm part of unincorporated Washington County. How would it be possible for the county commissioners to support private companies in blocking citizens from an independent choice of a recycling service? A free market is about competition. Without it, it's a monopoly. One common type of antitrust violation is an agreement to restrain competition. In Washington County Code 8.04.050, it states, quote, reasonable rules and regulations, unquote. This proposal is not reasonable. This proposal by the garbage haulers is trying to replicate a service by Ridwell, but a mediocre service that they're proposing. Ridwell is less expensive and recycles more items than the garbage haulers. Ridwell is easy to use, and they pick up from my front porch. Ridwell recycles everything that this proposal is offering, plus corks, electronics, towels, linens, and clothes. Well, I guess they, you, this proposal has clothes, fluorescent light tubes, and styrofoam. This additional recycling collection service proposal by the garbage haulers would cost almost $28.54. It would cost me probably about $21, considering what you showed tonight. But Ridwell charges $12 to $16 per month. I pay 12, which includes two pickups a month that I don't have to call them about, that we can opt into or opt out of. We get a text reminder before pickup and after pickup, and they provide clean cloth bags for, that are marked in a receptacle for our porch. We are passionate about Ridwell service, and the items get reused. Another question I have is, why are the garbage haulers proposing this now? Also, oh, I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, I'm going over here. Ridwell's recycling service is their only undertaking, which means that they can concentrate on better use of our recycling. And I just, it seems that it looks like it's an additional moneymaker for them. Please, our earth needs good stewards. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Next, we have Carrie Walker McCullough. Carrie, can you hear us?
I can, and I hope you can hear me too.
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Awesome. Chair Harrington and Washington County Commissioners, my name is Carrie Walker McCullough. My family owns and operates Walker Garbage and Recycling Service, proudly serving our neighbors in Washington County for 74 years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of the expanded recycling collection proposal before you tonight. You've heard the details of the program. So my point in speaking is to reiterate that your certificated, your certified haulers are 100% committed to serving the needs of our communities and proud to do so while paying our employees a living wage and providing good medical benefits for them and their families. We live here, we work here, and we contribute to our community's social, economic, and environmental fabric. We support this program with enthusiasm because it's consistent with our own history and commitment to serving all residents with the same access to services at a fair cost and a level of accountability in a highly regulated system. The haulers have always adapted to the needs of our communities from the early days of recycling, which our family is very proud of since our dad sat on the first committee that wrote the rules to recycle in the Portland metropolitan area. We've served people through the pandemic. We have never stopped our service even when our customers could not pay us. So I hope you as policymakers, regulators, and all in the communities we serve hear and see that we are committed partners. We listen to your needs, and we work to find solutions that protect public health while providing accessible, equitable, and affordable services to all that make up our great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Next, we have Jessica Miyaki. Jessica, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jessica, and I'm a Ridwell customer in Washington County. Waste Management is the largest waste management company in the country. So why are they so threatened by Ridwell, a comparatively tiny company picking up items that we shouldn't be placing in the recycling bins that we use at home? It's because large waste management, large waste management companies get paid for collecting and processing. The amount of money that they make from the sale of recycled materials means nothing to them. Their profits come from collection contracts. Single-stream recycling, where all of our recyclables are put in one bin, is the, is only profitable to these large companies if there is mass processing. So the less material we put in our curbside bins, even if it's not recyclable, the less money that these large companies make. In my opinion, Washington County Board of Commissioners shouldn't be regulating their campaign contributors. This is a conflict of interest. Chair Harrington has received over $28,000 in campaign contributions from garbage haulers, owners of garbage companies and recyclers. Commissioner Rogers, over $5,500. Commissioner Tries, $3,000. Commissioner Willie, over $1,700. Commissioner Phi, $1,000. Coincidentally, a number of these contributions have been made in the last six months. By limiting the garbage and hauling certificates, the county is creating a coercive monopoly. A coercive monopoly is not merely a sole supplier of particular good or service. It's a monopoly because there's no opportunity to compete with it because entering into the field is legally closed. If the county is truly concerned that Ridwell isn't following a code that was developed for a different type of collector, establish a clear code for their business model. Just because their business doesn't fit the mold of a large-scale garbage hauler doesn't mean that our county can't create a code that is relevant to the service that they provide. If Washington County is going to be a leader in progress, then we need to stop holding it back.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Scott Harttrampf.
Yep. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Great. Good evening. My name is Scott, and I'm in unincorporated Aloha. The proposal that was put forth by the Washington County Haulers Association to address additional recycling categories is a good start. It falls short of the services that Ridwell is providing. It has doubled the cost of Ridwell and increases the cost for ADA users over non-ADA users. The proposal removes services from multifamily dwellings for a considerable period of time, includes far fewer categories. The board has received hundreds of contacts regarding this proposal with overwhelming interest in seeing the GRAC proposal improved to better match Ridwell's offerings or to otherwise allow Ridwell to continue to business. I think most existing Ridwell customers would be happy to allow the haulers to offer their services if it meant Ridwell could continue. But the exclusionary nature of Washington County's franchise system doesn't allow Ridwell to continue after this proposal is adopted. Unfortunately, it's not the hundreds of constituents that seem to have mattered, but rather the money flowing directly to you, the board members, to gain your approval. Commissioners have received thousands of dollars to your election campaigns in the last few months with the aim of influencing your vote. While I realize that politics has heavy influence from lobbying and soft money donations, I've been hopeful that you could rise above it at this local level and on this issue. I'm asking you to not accept the GRAC proposal. I'm asking you to directly communicate with Ridwell and find a compromise that does not fully end Ridwell's business in the county. It's said that a good compromise leaves the hall parties somewhat unhappy. But if you accept this proposal, the Washington County haulers will be leaving with satisfaction and increased profits, while Ridwell leaves the unincorporated county area entirely. Finally, your decisions here tonight are likely to influence other counties and towns, which could, in fact, remove Ridwell from Oregon entirely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Next, we have Caleb Weaver. Caleb, can you hear us?
I can.
Please go ahead.
Excuse me. Hello, my name is Caleb Weaver, and I handle public affairs for Ridwell. Thank you for the opportunity to offer a few brief comments. Ridwell is excited that the county is interested in expanding recycling and reuse opportunities, and we're thrilled to see the proposal to include batteries in the standard collection service for all residents. I look forward to hopefully getting clarity from county staff at some point soon about the earlier statements from Mr. Carr that Ridwell would be allowed to continue operating if this proposal were passed. That is not our understanding based on prior presentations or descriptions of the service and what would happen next. I also want to be clear, we have no objection to the franchise waste collection services, where everyone gets the same service with the same fees as Mr. Eggleston described. But that is not what is being proposed here. Not everyone will receive the same service. Indeed, much of the county will be entirely left out. People are charged more if, as prior commentators have mentioned, they require curbside service instead of, I mean, require doorstep service instead of curbside service. So it's just not, it's just simply not true. This is a fundamentally different service. I'm not going to go into detail of all the concerns that have been raised in the past. But the fact of the matter is, there will be fewer items collected under this program. There will be reduced opportunities for reuse. It will be less equitable than what residents can access today. And as other commentators have noted, there's going to be less innovation in the area of waste reduction because you're going to be driving away an innovative new business and handing our business to a group of companies that have no incentive to continue to reduce waste. And finally, it has come to our attention that there is a state law that appears to prohibit exactly this kind of program where somebody is charged more for accessing recycling services. And I would encourage you to move in a different direction and not head down a path where there's a legal cloud hanging over it is less equitable and doesn't serve either the environment or the residents of your community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Caleb. Next, we have Janine Ware. Janine, can you hear us? Janine, can you hear us there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. I, you know, I find it fascinating and listening to some of the comments and listening to the presentation that the services we've been asking for hasn't landed in an action plan until Ridwell showed up. And now I see you trying to make an effort to replicate their model. So, you know, I choose to recycle and upcycle with Ridwell because it supports, because it supports my efforts. It works well, and it works well for the nonprofit organizations that it partners with. We should continue to have a choice in how we recycle and upcycle our items from our household. We should encourage and celebrate the arrival of Ridwell and its innovative approach to recycling and upcycling. We should invite innovative business practices in recycling efforts. My household and the households of many of my neighbors support our right to recycle and upcycle as we choose. We support Ridwell's right to serve our community, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Janine. Next, we have Pamela Head. Pamela, can you hear us?
Yes. The reason I'm, I'm interested is I am a Ridwell subscriber, and I like the fact that you're thinking of doing this as a pickup service also. But as a nonprofit volunteer with Hands on Portland and some of the other Binky Patrol and mask-making efforts in the pandemic, we've had a lot of scraps. And this has taken two years now to, for the county to respond. So I do appreciate Ridwell, Ridwell providing jobs. And during the pandemic, seniors and immune-compromised individuals and just citizens did not want to go and recycle their plastics. So I think that this is kind of late, but it's needed. But I'm kind of torn between the two now. And I don't know really what my cost will be because I have been inviting my volunteers to recycle in my Ridwell because the county hasn't provided it. So I just want to say I'm glad the board recognizes that many people want to stay safe at home and wear masks and declutter. So I think there's, there should be a choice. My husband thinks that it's a lot of lobbying and thousands of dollars to persuade people to stop them from operating. to stop them from operating. And I have to say it's a private business and I don't see the point of trying to put them out of business. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Next, we have Teresa Marcus. Teresa, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Hi, I am a very enthusiastic Ridwell customer. I have felt so much better about my role as a citizen of the world, being a grandmother and the planet that we're going to leave to our children and grandchildren. And I'm kind of horrified sometimes at our throwaway society and how poorly things are made. So I have been thrilled to be able to not be putting plastic bags in the garbage, to not be putting clamshells in the garbage, to know that I can put clothing, well, I've always found a place for clothing items, but rags and that type of thing I can put in there. I collect my neighbors' batteries and light bulbs because I always, I always have room for those. And these are good people, but they're busy and I'm sure they care about the world. But if I weren't collecting them from them to put in my Ridwell box, they would be just putting them in their garbage and it would be going into the landfill. I am aghast that we would be doing anything to keep, to stop a service that has been doing such a great job. And I just really question, I really question, you all seem like great people and really sincere and committed, but I really question how you could possibly vote against something that would stop this service. It is so valuable and it is just, anyway, I can take my stuff to my daughters in Portland because they vokayed Ridwell. And so I, we will combine our families recycling there, but I won't be able to help my neighbors out anymore. So please, please reconsider. Please do the right thing for the planet. The, I don't know how that, I don't have any confidence that the trash haulers are going to really put things, do the right thing with the recycling. Thank you.
Teresa. Next, we have Sarah Wright. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. And hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, my name's Sarah Wright. I live in unincorporated Washington County and I've been a Ridwell subscriber for over a year. I pay on an annual basis, so I pay the equivalent of $12 a month. And looking at the new fee structure, you know, they pick up from my front door. Under the new fee structure, I would be paying $25.90 to $37.60 per month, depending on whether it was two or three pickups a month. I regularly recycle plastic film, light bulbs, batteries. Less often, I recycle threads, but very much appreciate the featured category where I've recycled electronics, cables, corks, and other items, including children's books recently, which were going to an organization for reuse. I was dismayed when my Ridwell service was paused due to this discussion. Like many others, I am concerned about the, the fact that the haulers are allowed a monopoly on this. I've heard many things about, you know, traffic on the roads, but the Ridwell service uses a vehicle of about the same size as a standard delivery, FedEx, UPS, et cetera. I also really appreciate the fact that I can recycle clamshells and styrofoam. That was mentioned. I get temperature-sensitive medications. And being able to collect my styrofoam and recycle that is something. So like many others here, I would ask you to make sure that we are able to continue with our Ridwell service. I applaud that you are looking at extending this to others. But you, at the moment, the proposal decreases my service and vastly increases my, my cost to two or three times what I currently pay if you remove Ridwell.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have Cynthia Cristofani. Cynthia, can you hear us? You're able to unmute Cynthia? Okay, we will come back to you. Next, we have Alicia. Alicia, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Alicia and I live in unincorporated Washington County in Aloha. I've had a subscription with Ridwell for about a year and I'm very happy with my service. I pay $12 a month and I have two pickups. I use both of my pickups. And with the new program, I think I would actually end up be paying more than I do with the Ridwell currently. I found Ridwell to be a very transparent about where my recycling is actually going. And I have more trust in their company that my waste is actually being recycled compared to waste management. With waste management, I have no idea if my plastic is being recycled or going to the dump. And I want the option to choose what company I use for my supplemental recycling. Washington County should be ensuring that recycling companies are being honest with their customers. But this can be done by randomly auditing the recycling programs available. The people should have options. This keeps companies competitive and prices affordable for customers. Forcing unincorporated parts of the county to use a separate company is unfair and goes against what Washington County claims and being equitable to all of the county. Some sort of compromise between recycling companies and Washington County regarding regulations should be achievable. That is why the city commissioners are elected into office to represent the people. This is your job to work through problems together, to compromise and build solutions for a better tomorrow. I've reviewed the county's proposed program. I was underwhelmed. I would greatly prefer to keep my Ridwell subscription and strongly resent being forced into an inferior program that I do not trust. The people have asked.
Thank you, Alicia.
Okay.
Next, we have Christian Lechner. Christian, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. I'm Kristin Lechner. I'm the president and one of the owners of Pride Disposal Company. We are a fourth-generation, family-owned and operated business located in Sherwood. And in addition to unincorporated Washington County, we serve six cities within the county. As one of the certified haulers in Washington County, I'm excited about the additional recycling services decision before you tonight. We've always worked in partnership with the county to provide solid waste services that the community needs and this proposed service is a response to a need. Throughout the years, we've worked with the recycling processors and our local government partners to expand the list of curbside recyclables based on what can be accepted, sorted, and responsibly recycled. Also, for years, we have taken hard-to-recycle items such as electronics and fluorescent light bulbs at our recycling depot in Sherwood, where hard-to-recycle items have traditionally been handled to date. This new program before you tonight is just an evolution of our recycling system and is the next step. There are many benefits to providing a service like this within the regulated system. A primary benefit is that this service will be available to every residential household in unincorporated Washington County, regardless of what neighborhood a resident lives in. As with the other materials we and the other haulers already collect, these new materials will be delivered to responsible end markets and those locations will be reported to the county as they are now to ensure that they are being handled responsibly and recycled responsibly. Managing solid waste is an essential service and it's what we do and have done for years. Our employees are trained professionals with living wage jobs and our drivers all have commercial driver's licenses. In 2021, in all of our service areas, as Pride Disposal, my company collected 32,451 tons or the equivalent of 64.9 million pounds of recycling and yard debris that were kept out of the landfill. This additional recycling service is an opportunity to keep more material out of the landfill and, and, excuse me, and increase that diversion throughout unincorporated Washington County. Thank you for your time tonight and for your consideration of this new program.
Thank you, Kristin. Next, we have Margaret Johnson. Margaret, are you here under Scott? Can you unmute?
I am here.
All right, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Yeah. So thanks very much for allowing the comments. It's interesting as I've listened through everybody's comments, how mine have transformed. And I've never been so interested in a topic that I've even attempted to get this involved. I have worked in 30-plus years in the affordable housing industry and it's a highly regulated industry. I've worked as a lender, an investor, a developer, a property manager. And I'm, I know the struggles that Washington County is having with building affordable housing. And I would think you would recognize that sometimes overregulation is really keeping us from developing much-needed units that need to be in the ground to solve some of the homeless crisis. I would ask that the board should be more supportive of creative entrepreneurs like Ridwell to make a business successful at an affordable price. I've been, I was very impressed by your embracing your new strategies with equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so why not, why not do that with recycling? The companies, your certificate holders have only launched into this program because they've been pushed by a creative company called Ridwell to develop new strategies. Keep, keep the new things going. Keep the creativity going. Don't, don't shut it down.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Next, we have Eric Thompson. Eric, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name's Eric Thompson. I live in unincorporated Washington County. I'm a, I'm a former business owner and I'm a former volunteer of the SCORE program, partner with the SBA. I have an ingrained sympathy towards small businesses, ones that fulfill a service that other businesses can't, won't, or don't fulfill. And it seems to me like this new program is, is just a day late and a dollar short to the party. Ridwell has provided me with four things. Convenience, education, gratitude, and environmental activism. Convenience, I don't have to drive to four or five different places in dangerous traffic, some, sometimes 10 or 15 miles away to recycle things like styrofoam. They come right to my door. Education, Ridwell has answered so many questions about what is and what is not recyclable. Gratitude, Ridwell has contacted me on multiple occasions to say, thank you for your business. Thank you for being our customer. Ridwell has also, is taking things like clamshells that nobody else will even take for a fee. I've looked all around trying to pay somebody to take these things and nobody will. On the, on the other hand, our current recycler has never picked up styrofoam or batteries or clothing, is not doing a very thorough job in education. As I can tell by driving up and down the street, I see all kinds of stuff in the wrong bin, has never called to say thank you for being a customer for over 20 or 30 years. And if there's that, if the current hauler is so concerned about the environment, they need to fix their trucks so they quit leaking hydraulic fluid all over our streets, no matter how many times we have asked them to fix it. That's my, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Eric. That completes the list. Would any other members of the public on as attendees wish to testify on this item? Please utilize raise hand function. Give it to my, okay? Let's see. Cynthia, can you unmute?
Yes.
There you go. Please go ahead.
Like many who have already spoken, I'm one of the many, many Ridwell customers of unincorporated Washington County who cherish the recycling services they provide. And I personally am enraged that the county remains determined to award a monopoly to the garbage haulers for recycling services they've utterly failed to provide for many years. Now, if the haulers have developed a proposal, it's clear to me that it's both inferior to and more expensive than Ridwell's service. As many others have commented, the spectrum of items that Ridwell accepts and recycles responsibly is far broader than is proposed in this program. As I look at the rates, I would have to pay nearly twice as much for the same service I now receive currently. You talk about no subscription, but in fact, your program would require $2.50 a month. So that is a subscription. And as I say, adding that to the intermittent collection fees would make it significantly more expensive. I wrote a letter of complaint, which was actually published in the Oregonian. You may have seen it. I was very pleased by the title added by the newspaper, quote, "Washington County's Ridwell Vendetta," unquote. Mr. Eggleston's slides I saw at the last board meeting, as well as this one, talking about equal access, regulatory safeguards, fair and just rates, and regional vision values. I challenge those claims. I'm rather convinced that the haulers have managed to achieve unjustified control over this board through unfair means such as campaign contributions. It was particularly offensive to me when Chairman Harrington commented that Ridwell excels in marketing, suggesting that we citizens are fools who have been taken in by a slick marketing campaign. No, we are not ignorant. We are committed recyclers who demand fair treatment of a company that we value. I also urged the board to reject the proposal to award a monopoly to the garbage haulers and instead vote to permit fair competition between the haulers and Ridwell. Ridwell would certainly meet any reasonable regulations for safety, insurance, treatment of employees, and responsible disposable materials collected. There should be a level playing field and we says we'll add to choose for ourselves which service we prefer. If Portland can treat nationally, so can Washington County.
Thank you. Not seeing any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Well, colleagues, I don't know about you, but I have several questions and we've been at this for two and a half hours. Would anyone like to join me in taking a break for 10 minutes and then coming back? I'm seeing a, okay, so Clerk Moss, we're going to take a 10-minute break and then reconvene at 10 past nine, 13 minutes.
Right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Right, welcome back, Commissioners. Commissioner Phi, Chair Harrington, Commissioner Willie, are you back with us? All right, back to you, Madam Chair. Run double mute, Madam Chair.
No, I just didn't undo my single mute, but thank you, Clerk Moss. I appreciate that. Okay, Commissioners, so we had the opportunity of hearing several bits of testimony from community members. I think all of the community members we heard from have our current subscribers of the Ridwell service. And I think every one of them identified themselves as residents of the urban unincorporated neighborhoods. And then we also had the opportunity to hear from a couple of haulers. I didn't add up the numbers at all, but I appreciate all of the community members who did speak tonight. So now is a good time for us to take any questions we have from our staff and/or comments and go from there. Who would like to go first?
Well, Chair, you, you, you've said that you've got a pretty good list. I'm wondering if, to avoid duplication, and Roy, I don't want to jump in front of you. You were going to comment there. I've got a pretty significant list and just some observations as well, but you know, considering the time and where we are on all of this, I mean, do you want to start with your list and then if there's some additional things, maybe we could jump in on that and, and again, yeah, the Commissioners, I don't want to get ahead of you. So if you want to do that now, that's fine, but like I said, I've got a list of questions as well. They're probably, some of them the same as you, Chair, so I'm fine with you taking the lead.
So I'm fine with you just starting and I can keep track of if my questions are answered. But if you want to wait, Commissioner Rogers, why don't you go first?
But maybe just a couple of comments and then discuss the franchise issue. A couple of comments, a little disappointed to see the attack on the chair in regard to whether or not she was calling anybody dumb or wasn't listening. I, I never heard her say that and that was not the intent, I think, of the, of her comment. So it's disappointing. We all say things sometimes we don't you know, particularly like I've done over my career more times than I want to count, but I, I was just putting that comment. Also, I want to set the record straight because people watch this. I, I never raised money except when I'm running. Last time I ran was two years ago and I raised less than a thousand dollars and the time for that was four years ago. I'm not sure where these monies are being counted as we're all getting all this from the money from the haulers. I, they could give me a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it wouldn't change my opinion. I mean, it's just, it has nothing to do with money. And so anyone who's insinuating that probably doesn't know the character of the people who are serving here. In regard to the franchising, I'm a small business person and for those who are watching or watch this later, I mean, I'm actively running a business and I I understand small business and I understand the need to have innovation and creativity. But there are some things that you have franchises for, and that is the ability to regulate is the ability to provide. Frankly, if, if, if we didn't have some regulation and I used to not be here, I was on the other side, but I'm on the regulation side now because I understand that people would pick and choose. You would say, well, I don't want to provide service to that person because maybe it's out of my way or it's too difficult to pick up their, their garbage cans or I it's not profitable enough. And so people in business choose who they deal with based upon the profitability they have. We can't have that. We have to provide sewer to people, water to people, and garbage service people. That's all based upon human needs to have those kinds of services. So I, I, I get it. The only thing that I would say, and that's why I was asking Tom use of questions and also of Tom a little earlier. I thought where we were going with this until I read the staff report, the latest one, is that somehow we were going to expand the franchise ability to include some for-profit companies in selected cases. So we'd start off, what we do tonight, hopefully was to take the haulers and bring them forward into the program, which is good. And then there would be some opportunities. We'll discuss how that might be conducted. So I, I, I might be the only one of the five of us who was a bit surprised about that, but I thought that somehow we would figure a methodology much like the other counties have done to to allow private enterprise to potentially compete in limited ways. How I would describe that, I don't know. I just knew that we needed to have some mechanism for the haulers who do pay a franchise fee, do follow a number of regulations. They're highly regulated, highly regulated. That we would have them provide this service. In my particular district, about eighty-five, eighty percent of it is all in cities. So it's a little different than some of the other districts, but we, we seem to be able to work things out. I would hope for unincorporated areas that maybe we could figure that out as well. So that's, you know, collage of random thoughts, but for those who think we're not listening, we are. For those who think that somehow we're, have some vested interest, that that's not true. And for those who might think that we don't have a huge unabiding respect and admiration for the electorate, they're wrong. We do. We understand how smart you are. So that's why we listen, we care. We serve in these capacities. So that's my comments, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rogers, thank you. Staff, is there anything about what you heard from Commissioner Rogers and the understanding of the proposal that you want to clarify at this time? Just wanted to offer you the opportunity.
I, you know, the Washington County code is really where the franchise system was, is been developed and where it exists in our, in our system. And this action today is not changing county code. So it doesn't change the fundamental franchise system. And I think that's really the root of this debate is about the franchise system and the value of the franchise system and how far the franchise system goes. So I think it's a good observation, Commissioner Rogers, and I appreciate it. And I, you know, I think we all struggle with that, that concept and that question as well, but this action is not necessarily changing the franchise system.
Who would like to go next? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie, Vice Chair Willie.
Okay, well, I, I will jump in on this then. I'm a firm believer of the free enterprise system and certainly want to encourage competition, quite frankly, in, in every avenue of the private sector. We, as the county, though, we require these haulers to pay a franchise fee and provide annual reporting that is at no small cost to them to provide the hauling services that they've been doing, the garbage services. If there is a guilty party for why we haven't provided these additional services, I'm, I'm going to say that's probably on us. Maybe we should have reached out to them and said, there's a gap in the recyclables that we need to be meeting and we'd like you to do that. Okay, so that's looking in the rearview mirror. What, so what is the priority that I heard in every one of these testifiers? And that is that we recycle these products. We provide for the ability for basically curbside service to recycle these products. Now, the question I have is, you know, we didn't include Styrofoam. And I heard in one of the people saying they could put their Styrofoam out there, my question would be, so where does Ridwell take that Styrofoam? But that's a side issue. The, the big picture is, to me, is that we need to be providing these services. And at the same time, we have certificate holders that have been paying fees for all these years to provide services to a specified market. And we need to honor that. And if they say, we're going to provide those services and we're going to provide them in an honorable way. So we're going to make sure that the items are recycled where they should be recycled. And we're going to be competitive in our fees because Orson County is setting those fees. Then we should be able to allow that. At the same time, we should be able to say to a Ridwell, you've got to at least request a certification and pay a fee, just like the rest of the haulers pay a fee. There's no free entry. So that's where I'm a little conflicted in my free enterprise mentality is we're saying to the certificate holders, provide this service. And if they say, well, okay, now really, we don't want to do that, or we really can't afford it at that price, then we would let a Ridwell company provide that. And so I don't I don't know where that where that blend is. I don't know how we get to that point. But again, to all the people that testified, I heard your passion for Ridwell, but I actually heard your passion for providing a recycling service. And so that's going to be my focus in the decision I make is we absolutely have to be able to provide that service by someone. And how we navigate that, I'm not sure of right now. But that's going to be the top priority, is making sure those products get recycled.
Chair, I'd like to make a few comments, please. First of all, I appreciate everybody who testified. And there was a wide range of people who testified. Well, the people we didn't hear from are the people who don't currently have the opportunity to recycle. And we know that Ridwell serves sixteen hundred households in Washington County. And I believe Mr. Carr identified that there were over two hundred thousand households in, and I'm not sure that that's unincorporated. But but nonetheless, the point is that Ridwell is still serving a small, a small sliver, and the passion, as Commissioner Willie pointed out, is there. I also want to thank Mr. Eggleston for for really defining for me the fact that there's two are, there's two issues that we're discussing here. One is the franchise issue, which is very separate from the issue of recycling. I am a big proponent of recycling. It fits into my belief is it fits into and will fit into our climate goals as we look to those into this next year with a with our strategy. This is a very important piece. And recycling is something that we need to be able to offer to a much wider group of people, those people we did not hear from tonight. So I feel very strongly that my my goal is to follow the passion of those that I heard from tonight and to extend the opportunity to those that are beyond the service areas for Ridwell right now. I also want to make sure, and I and I'm I'm pretty confident in reading the materials that the GRAC, who has made up both our citizens in Washington County again, have provided us along with the support and the guidance of the staff with a plan that meets a very competitive sense of the amount that can be recycled against the cost to do so. So I am, like I said, I am looking to the larger picture here. I want to be able to be to be able to provide a recycling program to unincorporated Washington County that meets the needs of all of our residents. And that's that's really important to me. Thank you.
Commissioner Fie, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I'll just jump in here quickly. And I like to, you know, I think when I got in this job, I committed myself to lead with integrity and fairness. And I want us to create the space to be fair to the people that we heard from tonight and see what we can deliver in terms of their requests. I think Mr. Weaver asked a compromise, and I don't know the two Mr. Carr and Tom and Thomas, I'll just say. If you can speak to the, what would a compromise look like of what Caleb Weaver was asking? And then also, and Tom Carr, stop me if I get into hot waters here. My understanding originally was we were going to actually replicate the regulations in Portland. So I don't know where that conversation got dropped. My understanding is Portland is also a franchise. And why are we not heading in that direction to mirror what Portland have in place to meet the needs of our residents, especially the ones that we've heard from tonight?
So we pretty much did what Portland did. Portland did exactly the same thing we did. They passed a temporary, they passed an ordinance, not a temporary rule. But it says pretty much the same thing, that they can recycle things that are not being recycled by the carers. The step that we've taken is to create a program for the cars to actually do that recycling. So we've gone a step further. The other thing, the only other difference between our rule and Portland's is that ours says that the the material collected actually has to be recycled. That's not a requirement for Portland's ordinance. So I think we have headed down that line. We've just moved faster to try to provide these services to everybody.
So you're saying that we're we're taking a step further than yeah, that wasn't my understanding of going beyond what Portland was doing. So it's all coming back now to figure out why the residents were emailing and texting us and not texting, but messaging us. So I'm in support of passing a regulations to to do what Portland is doing and and to figure out how we can come up with a compromise.
Well, can I speak with to that? The the challenge with coming up with compromises, it requires a fundamental change to the system. So our current system says, as I think one of the commissioners said, perhaps Commissioner Willie, that you can only serve if you have a certificate, you have an exclusive territory. And those territories are all occupied. There's no certificates available. So to allow another company to come in would require us to change our code to allow for that, which would be a difference. It's possible yours, the commissioner, you can make those changes if you wish. But it's a it's a major change. It's not something we could do tonight. And then there's the question of, one of the things that the franchise system supports is the economic viability of delivering the service. Whenever you have a this kind of franchise, you do it in things like electricity and water and police services, things that that are expensive to provide that you want to provide across the board, and that competition doesn't generally improve. So those are decisions as policymakers you could make. But I think it's a longer conversation than we're prepared for this evening. And and I invite Tom to to correct me if I've got any of that wrong. He knows this stuff so much better than I do.
No, I think that's absolutely correct, Mr. Carr. I mean, you know, the franchise system relies on the exclusivity. It is a quote unquote regulated monopoly, and it provides a service to all community members inside of its service area. And it does so based on the fact that it does that for everybody. And so if the if the franchise is fractured, or if pieces of the franchise are pulled out, then the cost of providing service to the rest of the system goes up because those lucrative accounts essentially get cherry picked out of the system. This is a classic example in Dropbox services, maybe a little easier to think about. If Dropbox was franchised for certain providers, but also allowed other third-party entrants into that system, those thirty-party entrants would come in and occupy all those lucrative construction contracts for their their bidding. And then those homeowners that are doing weekend cleanouts might not get the same level of services because the providers that provide the service across the community are losing out on the profitability of those more lucrative accounts. So it's really an averaging of the system and the services in order to create equal access for everybody. The other example I I think about, and I talked about earlier is, you know, for our regular base garbage service, we have community members that live in timber, and they provide they get a thirty-two gallon garbage can delivered to their household, and they pay twenty seven dollars a month for that collection service. That service costs over two hundred dollars a month to probably deliver to that individual customer. But because it's an essential service and because it's a franchise system, the service is provided to them at that average cost across the system. And if we take out those some parts of that, the average cost goes up because only the less lucrative accounts are left in the system. So it's really based on an averaging effect. And that's why we manage to a system and we set rates every year. We look at the whole system costs and we average it out across the system, and we set rates based on that whole system cost. And that's what keeps it efficient and keeps the cost down for everybody.
Well, I'll go next. I'm, I have to say, I'm really struggling for clarity on this. On one hand, I hear that what we're doing is what Portland has done. Yet, on the other hand, we're moving faster. So let me, can I try this? Can someone describe to me how it works in Portland? Because I haven't really looked into what Portland does. I know we talked about it in a work session long ago, but my brain moved on to other things.
So Portland's ordinance essentially is identical to the temporary administrative rule. It says that service providers other than franchisees may provide a service in the community so long as that service is not provided by the franchisee. So that's what the temporary rule is really saying. And today, if we didn't take, if the board didn't take any action, it would be the identical situation, identical circumstance. The difference is now the action before the board is to develop a program within the franchise. And if that program comes into the franchise, then the exemption changes in terms of what's left outside of the franchise. So those other materials that are outside of the franchise may still be technically allowed to be collected.
And if a franchise holder, one of our certificate holders for a particular area, doesn't want to provide the service themselves, what I think I heard earlier is they can subcontract it out to Ridwell if Ridwell's interested in servicing, offering the service to all the households in that area. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, but Ridwell would have to provide a similar service that is franchised. So they they can't change the the rates and the fees in the system and the program because it's the same program delivered to all community members.
Okay, okay. So if I might, I just want to make sure that I understood this proposal relative to some of the testimony that we heard. So I'm looking at the slide that has fee structure, where there's a base charge that's monthly. So if I'm a customer that has just curbside pickup, and I understand this is on demand, so I could ask for it to be once a month, right? Or not at all. In which case, I'd just pay two fifty. But if I did have it that month, I could pay an additional nine twenty-five for a total of eleven twenty-five. And if I wanted pickup twice that month, it would be another nine twenty-five charge for a total that month of twenty-one dollars. But it's all completely in my control.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then it it varies from there in terms of non-curbside pickup and the distance for that. And I'm terrible at distances, so I couldn't tell you how many houses I've lived in that's within or outside of a hundred and fifty feet. But I I think I got the calculations now.
And one one thing, excuse me, Chair Harrington, one thing I think is important to note that our administrative rules do, I heard in the in the testimony that folks that are disabled under Oregon State Rule statute definition of a disabled, then receive a disabled parking permit, receive they receive distance services in our system without a charge because they don't get to choose whether they avoid those fees or not. So it's not, it's not considered a convenience fee. It's an essential fee. And that's an existing rule within our system and also applies to regular curbside recycling services and programs.
Okay, okay. That took care of two questions. I don't know which of the Thomas versus Tom I need to direct this question to. Do we I don't know if Ridwell has offered this service already to all households in urban unincorporated Washington County. When I look at the overall population of the UUAs that we have just from the recent census with over two hundred and twenty thousand people, you know, do calculations on the number of households. At best, it seems to me like it's ten percent of the households are currently picking up the service if all sixteen hundred are in the UUAs. But I don't know how many it's been marketed to. And with this proposal, I'm correct in understanding that the service has to be offered to all of the the households, as you say, from one, you know, one to four plexes. Do you know how many, if if all the households in urban unincorporated Washington County have already been offered the service?
We do not.
Okay, okay. But the proposal that we have tonight to consider would enable every one of those households that you talked about, residential customers, one to four plex to pick up the service if they'd like.
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Um. Then, uh, I think it's the last thing I have. I've I've heard some things tonight about what government has or has not been interested in. And I just want to say, well, sorry, I forgot to say a couple of other things. I've been really pleased that the folks tonight have clear, in their testimony, have clearly understood that what we're talking about is a proposal that applies to the urban unincorporated areas only and not in the cities. And I wanted to make note of that because I know we all, as board members, as well as from our staff, have been dealing with far too many angry emails from city community members when our authority doesn't apply to their circumstances at all. So I really want to to let everyone know that in addition to their taking the initiative tonight to come and share their thoughts with us, and maybe some of them did as well with the garbage recycling advisory committee, I thank you for that. But also recognizing the the folks were from the urban unincorporated areas. What what I wanted to get to a moment ago was that while I've been chair for these three years, and prior to being chair, I was a metro counselor, so I had the twelve years of experience there with waste and recycling details across our whole region. And, uh, but during this time, just over three years as chair, I remember back in twenty nineteen, my very first year on the commission, hearing from our staff about recycling difficulties in servicing our community. There was China saying no to receiving materials because of, for example, their own market providing enough recycling plastics for them to to consume themselves. They didn't need ours, and they didn't want ours anymore because of quality problems as well. But also needs for common services across all of our regional communities. And that's both what is recycled, you know, the the materials themselves, there was, there was a pretty clear list and which eliminated some things like clam shells that people were by the marketing of those materials with the little recycling symbols, said it was recyclable by those who create the material, but we don't have markets for for dealing with that volume. But also how the service is provided to customers. For example, we're already required to adopt common, a common color scheme for all bins, so that So that if you move from one city to another city or from the UUAs to a city and back and forth, your bin color is going to be the same, right? So when we talk about the blue bin or the purple bin or the green bin, it's the same. And the recycle material list will have some consistency instead of causing confusion. Tom, Thomas Eggleston, am I correctly characterizing the experience?
Absolutely, Chair Harrington. And you know, the twenty thirty Regional Waste Plan really speaks to a lot of this and and strives for regionally consistent economically, you know, responsive services across our system and all aspects of our system. And and one of the things that we're really looking forward to in our in our state of Oregon is we're fortunate enough to to have had the legislature pass the Recycling Modernization Act in twenty twenty one, and they're going to set a statewide collection list. And they're going to ask producers and manufacturers to join us in managing discards and end of life products so that we have more accountability throughout the supply chain and we know what's happening with these materials. We are, our materials recovery facilities get investments from industry to help recycle better and sort. Maybe this issue goes in tw- by twenty thirty, it's a moot issue because all community members have bins that can accept all these materials and we, that's the vision of the of recycling in Oregon and and how we get there is going to be an interesting journey as we invite these new participants into the system, but you're absolutely correct. It's a, it's a long term, you know, project and it's a lot of change and it's a lot of local governments and a lot of service providers and a lot of community members that are working together to make a more consistent approach.
Yep, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And lastly, I just want to say, you know, I've I've tried to focus here on the positive and on the clarity. I know that I am part of a board that wants to ensure that what can be recycled is recycled and also that we make sure we, through the programs that we're responsible for in the areas that we're responsible for, that we follow the requirements that are imposed upon us from our regional government as well as our state government. And and that we do right by all of that. I haven't heard a single member of this commission not appreciate recycling. So I, I just want to commend my colleagues there. I've, I've been a little disheartened to hear from folks that this proposal is less equitable. Because we've tried to be very clear that in the system that we have in our code already, as Mr. Eggleston has pointed out, there's the franchise system and recycling. And the issue we're dealing with here is recycling. The way the franchise system works is that every residential customer has the offer of the service. And I think Commissioner Rogers spoke eloquently to that as well. And I appreciate those comments. And and so when we talk about that equal system, that's really what we're getting at. So I just, just wanted to make note of of that. And thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for your positioning on that. So I think tho- that's the extent of the comments that I'd like to offer tonight and turn it over to the commission. Yes, Commissioner Trese.
I just wanted to add one comment. Chair, when you were talking about the the price structure and and early on, one of your questions, I think one piece that we continually miss is the volume aspect. And the fact that 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 bin that is available twice a month at on-call is a very large bin and is almost double in size. So so that 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 has a mediating effect on the on the cost. And I, when I heard the testimony, you know, I I kept thinking, I don't know if people really understand the the fact that it's designed to be potentially a once a month pickup. So you've got a big enough bin that you would only have to have a pickup once a month. So I just want to get that comment out there.
Thank you, because I lost sight of that myself. So thank you very much. Which means that the service is less expensive than what people have now to the tune of eleven seventy five. And I think someone else said they have twelve dollars a month. So it's very similar. Yeah. Thank you.
I have one comment just for clarification. Tom, about sixteen hundred Ridwell customers, did I understand that right?
That's what they've said. There's sixteen hundred customers in Washington County and we don't know whether that's, that includes customers in the cities.
And then I should have priced it Thomas, but then sixteen hundred, about two hundred and twenty thousand households? Is that about right in the county somewhere?
That's what the census, that's what the census says, yes.
So what we're talking about is three, not not, it was mentioned, maybe it was ten percent. It it's it's less than three quarters of one percent. This is a very, very small number in terms of the nu- number of people, but i- if I if I had, if I were king for the day, what I would do is pass this ordinance and I got four others to convince. And then I would revisit this whole issue. Is is there any thing that we can do with our franchising? That we might be able to accommodate some private sector. And I understand we need to change our code. I understand we need to do all the rest, but it never hurts to dialogue, but we're not going to do that tonight. We're not going to do that in the next few months, but it would seem that there's an appropriate conversation to be had.
I was that.
Yeah, and I too thank everybody who testified. I don't think anybody was mean spirited. We get passionate in what we say and we understand that. We've all been around long enough to understand that. We do sometimes too, but we we appreciate the comment, but I I I think we need to move forward because I I can't say to the other ninety nine point three percent of the people that you get nothing. So we're going to get ninety nine percent of them taken care of. And to those point zero zero seven that we didn't have, take care of tonight. Maybe there's some conversation to be had. So that's where I'm at.
Go ahead, Commissioner Willie, and then I'd like to ask if someone would like to make a motion.
I would completely agree. I'll be really, really quick. Again, the driving focus was to ensure that we were providing a service that these items could be and should be recycled. And with that, we are holding our haulers and our franchisees accountable to do exactly that for a fee that we have established. And and like you've said, Roy and others, we're not providing this to just sixteen hundred households. We're providing this to every household in Washington County. And so with that, we are significantly expanding the opportunity. So I agree. So thank you, Chair. Sorry to go.
So what we have before us tonight is a recommendation. And staff is asking if anyone on the board would approve the resolution and order amending the solid waste and recycling administrative rules as set forth in Exhibit A and the proposed collection rates as set forth in Exhibit B. What are the wishes of the commission? So moved from Commissioner Rogers. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Willie. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? I see one hand, so the mid, the resolution passes four to one. Thank you, Commissioners. Long night tonight. So next, we have our second period of public testimony. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who would like to address us for up to five minutes a person?
No one signed up. Would any members of public wish to address the board for up to five minutes at this time? I'll give you just a moment to raise your hand if you would like. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. So next, I'll move to board announcements. Before I do the ordinary meeting set, I would like to note that I forgot to raise an item during our board communication at work session today. And that is a topic, a proposed topic for our June Town Hall, which I believe is slated for June seventh, if I got the date right. But it's early in June. And so a couple of us have bantied about the fact that we've had different folks in our community make inquiries about what services are available to our older adults of our community. And so I talked to Ms. Angie, followed up with Marnie Kyle. But before we take that idea any further, I wanted to hear if board members had any other ideas framed up. We do still have about seven, six, seven weeks before. I think it's six weeks now, but you know, speakers and materials would need to be organized. So we don't want to let it go. So what do the board members think? Okay, well, we do these once, you know, once every three months. So there's plenty of opportunity for future topics. Go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
I think it's a, I think it's a good topic to address, and I think it fits in nicely as we will not be able to address budget related issues quite at that point in time. So I think that it does, it does dovetail into a a good slot for this discussion.
Yep, yep. And I've been, I've had some conversations with Ms. Angie about the Q three timeframe, coming back to budget as well as some some other things that have popped out of my mind at this late in the evening. So, yeah. Okay, well, we'll move forward with that and you know, keep your thinking caps on because we always have an opportunity every few months with these town halls. So sounds great. Yes, ma'am.
I do want to just confirm it is on June, on Tuesday, June seventh, from six to eight.
Okay, thank you. And because I'm tired and I want to make sure I do the meeting announcements properly, I'm going to pull up the latest packet to make sure I do this correctly. Because Clerk Moss works hard to make sure it's correct. So for future meetings, we have next Tuesday, we're into the month of May. We'll have a work session that starts at nine in the morning. Then we'll convene to the Housing Authority Board of Directors Monthly Meeting at ten o'clock that usually runs a half an hour. And so we'll convene as the as the board for Washington County and Clean Water Services after that at approximately ten thirty AM. And with it being the month of March, we begin our whole series of budget conversations, but I'm going to skip over those for the time being. Our next board meeting would be just a work session, right? The second Tuesday of the month. That'll be Tuesday, May tenth. That'll start at nine in the morning. Our third set of board meetings for the month will be Tuesday, May seventeenth, with a work session at nine in the morning, a board meeting convening at ten AM and then reconvene in the work session after that. And if it gets close to the lunchtime hour, we usually go to work session at one o'clock. Our last set of board meetings for the month will be on Tuesday, May twenty fourth. Work session in the afternoon at two PM, just like we did today, and a board meeting at six thirty PM. Returning back to the theme of budgets, it's that time of year. On Friday, May sixteenth, we will have a most of the day Friday, May sixth, for the Clean Water Services Board of Directors Budget Committee Meeting at night, starting at nine AM. The following week, on Monday, we will convene in the evening as the Washington County and Service District for Lighting Budget Committee Meeting. And with these budget committee meetings, we're doing something a little bit different this year in that we will be taking public comment in these budget committee meetings and and not waiting until just the public hearings. That same week, on Thursday, May twelfth, we'll have a second budget committee meeting for the Washington County Service District for Lighting, starting at five thirty in the eve- five thirty in the evening, because it's a really big budget. On Monday, May sixteenth, we'll start to focus on the special district budgets. The Combined Committee for the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, ESPD, as well as the Urban Road Maintenance District, URMD. Both of those apply to the urban unincorporated areas. Then on Thursday, May nineteenth, we'll finish up with the Urban Road Maintenance District Budget Committee Meeting and also have the North Bethany Community Service District for Roads Budget Committee Meeting, and those start at five thirty in the evening. So that's it. It's going to be a hopping, busy month of May, that's for sure. So we're just about to say goodbye to April showers and into May with more spring flowers. Are there any other board announcements for this evening? Mr. Carr, I see you're unmuted. You have, did you have anything?
No, Chair, I just forgot to mute.
No worries, just wanted to check. Well then, seeing none, I think that wraps it up at the just before ten PM. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? We have a motion from Vice Chair Willie, a second from Commissioner Trese. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand, signing somehow. Excellent. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Sweet dreams, everyone. Thank you.